What's fantastic about the things.
CLC boards. About ten years.
Really?
Yeah.
I think so.
That was. I don't get it. On the back. Like that. All the boards.
Yeah.
All the board, no, all the boards outside.
Well, yeah, it's. Too, it gets to be too much. It's kind of like.
It wasn't too much.
Yeah.
You know, that makes it better.
It does. And it stretches your bringing a little thin to be wearing so many hats.
Yeah.
There you go.
How are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good, you putting these up front?
Yeah, I'll put them up there for you.
Oh. Two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Come on.
I'm already sorry.
Hi.
In the fact that I. It's a way to go to college.
Ah, okay.
Hi, Mary.
But when I said you, it was using template, but it was actually.
Yeah.
Exactly, the template on itself means.
I thought I should know that, I didn't know that.
You remember the solid?
Yes.
I'm not getting far in these templates. Get the list of all the options. Bring them to Dropbox and it's custom. We'll see. You know what, it wouldn't change. Actually, it would be.
Probably.
Something. That'll actually add some.
From the station. Yes. Station one is. Our high street. So we're about, we're about five hundred. Four feet. So we're about seven. Right, because I thought she told me seven.
But why they have it there. So that.
Seven.
Can I go write a script or?
Yes, right. Because they, they give me a comment there of a five hundred five. Well, you're right. We're pretty close. Five nine?
I've been impressed.
Seven. Seven nine to five.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Oh, um, I am. Jessie.
Yes, exactly. That's the keep saying, when is it being? She's saying, when is it going to come out? But then she just asked me at breakfast.
How does that?
And I was like, girlfriend, it's a little too early in the day to get in. You're only three.
Yeah, well, you know, just.
I was like, oh, look, cereal.
Yeah, you know what they always say? Turn it around and say, well, what do you think?
What do you think? Yeah, that's what I usually ask Ben. Luckily, she just was, she moved on to ponies immediately, so, you know. It just took me aback that she even. Sort of realized that that was a thing that needed to happen, so.
Good evening, how are you? She's a smart.
I guess so, I guess so. Well, you know, we've been watching, um, for the giraffe. We had been waiting, there was a live cam.
Oh, really?
On a giraffe who was waiting to have her baby, so maybe, maybe it occurred to her that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just to get it on that cable and this stuff. What's the line?
Oh, oh, okay.
I don't want to be sitting there waiting for most of this guy.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine.
For the receiver. Because I'd like to get a motion in the second and then entertain Joelle and whoever.
Yes.
For this one.
Are they copy?
We good?
No, I went to the jazz concert. So how was it?
It, it opened my questions and then there were questions. That each candidate goes and the other three respond. Probably a hundred fifteen.
Wow.
I mean, it was good. Because this seat's a hundred thirty-six.
Yeah.
And it, probably somewhere one forty to one sixty. They had a seven.
Adam Clark?
How are you? Thanks.
They had a diaphragm. Phil Bennett.
Yeah.
He was a quanist. He's a quanist.
Okay.
If it's his leasing agent, he'll release in his presentation.
Yeah, they have an hour of just meet and greet.
Okay, great. And that's on, that's during the regular.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll double check if I can grab them.
Fairly.
I just don't want to miss calling her up if she's.
I don't blame you.
Okay. Do we intend to have two separate executive sessions?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that, that's why I wasn't sure. Okay. So there's not, the first two items won't have separate items under those categories in the second meeting. It's just, okay, got it. Perfect. Great, thanks.
Thanks for what?
Not on me.
Thank you, sir. Oh, good, good. Good, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, he's hanging in there. How's Caroline?
Oh, well, this says Ward two, but I don't think it really matters.
That's good.
I mean, we all have the same thing.
Reconnect at some point, I feel like it's. Like, once a year now with this way we.
Do you think other people will be confused?
Yeah, what a jerk, huh?
Here's five.
I know, we had a good thing going for a while.
Okay, Ward four. Ward three.
Baker doesn't make me look like. Back in the dark.
Was the ultimate Baker afraid that not enough trees had died?
Now you don't have a tree and you don't want to.
Hi there. Thank you. Okay.
No, I, I looked at the. The email, um, my falling. Yeah, he was raising a question.
We're good to go. Yeah, I just was wondering if there was something I was perhaps missing in terms of. Yeah, okay, good. I think we're, I think we're clear, cleared up.
And his point was, if this had been done by. The time I allocated. In-house. It would be done and so forth.
I don't know where the gavel went.
Let me see. I don't think I had any of them because we.
Do you know where the gavel went?
No.
It's usually the judge.
Bunch of swag rollers in today, huh?
You haven't seen the gavel. You haven't seen the gavel.
Um, I'll keep checking.
The judge sits here, so I assume. Seat two. On public participation.
So who was your ambulances?
Uh, yeah, but he's.
Yeah, but this is where we entertain. In the town.
In the town, okay.
Yeah, because this consideration is for council discussion.
And it's not, I just, I.
Public purpose.
I took painting class. I had a good time. There were only two classes and we had.
Years ago, that's awesome. Eight seven nineteen?
Yep, I was gonna do it right now. How are you?
Oh, yes. No, no, it's okay, we were just gabbing.
Mr. Baker.
I'm just waiting till there's enough up there.
Please again, Rick Ward. Hello, Bill. I'm good.
Can you give a bit of an update? And you, you ready?
Hey, how are you?
Good.
She should have done a double sign, darn it.
You're where you want to be at?
Okay, let me call us to a point of order and convene the committee of the hall of city council February twenty-seventh. Ask for a roll call, please.
Jacobson. Fanouken.
Here.
Mark Court. Snow. Noriko.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Five present.
Thank you. Alderman Mark Court indicated he would be joining us in progress, anticipating to be coming during the committee of the hall. So we will proceed with the FY sixteen and a half year-end strategic plan update. I'll turn to Lauren Stott.
Hello. Am I being heard?
Not yet.
No.
Is there an on off switch on that button?
There, I think, I think it's on now. Thank you for the opportunity to address council. As you know, the DeKalb twenty twenty-five strategic plan guides the city's investments, program and policy priorities, and performance reporting for the foreseeable future. During the FY two thousand sixteen point five budget process, goals, strategies and action items were identified by each department for completion throughout the budget year. Progress on these items has been tracked using the city's Achieve It project management software system. This year-end report shows progress on all FY twenty sixteen point five items and highlights specific accomplishments that align with the plan's five visions. The reporting period reaches from July one, two thousand sixteen, to December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. I'm going to transition over to Patty Hopitson, who is going to review the agenda for this presentation.
Okay, good evening, everybody. It's really exciting to be able to present to you one full fiscal year update. Although it was only six months, it was our FY twenty sixteen point five fiscal year. It's still, you will see tonight all of the initiatives and efforts that were presented by staff throughout that six-month period. So let me go over the objectives via the agenda for our presentation. You have a lot of information in your packet and every single vision, goal, strategy, action item is highlighted in your materials. What we're going to do today is provide you a status overview of the items, the action items that city staff worked very hard on achieving during that six-month period. We're going to talk about some key achievements from each of the five visions. So we are not going to go through the entire forty-plus pages of the presentation, but we've selected just some things that really stood out that we would want to share with the community at large as well as city council this evening. And then we're quickly just going to let you know what the goals and strategies that we're going to be focusing on for twenty seventeen. Okay? So let me start by indicating that in the agenda documents that were presented, we only highlighted two of the status categories, the achieved and the not achieved. But after receiving feedback, once the agenda item was posted, we also wanted to highlight the completed category. Okay? So this presentation is updated based on feedback. So it's a little bit different than what's in your packet for this evening. So achieved, that specific status category means that the action item has been achieved and no further action is needed during this fiscal year. Remember, this is just reporting on a snapshot in time, a six-month period, so the FY twenty sixteen point five period. So achieved doesn't mean we're never going to work on it again, there's no more work to be done on behalf of the city. It means that the items that city staff identified to be worked on for that fiscal year were achieved in that period. Not achieved means that the action item has not been achieved for that, again, fiscal year. So for whatever reason, it was identified that we would not be moving forward with initiatives associated to that particular action item in this fiscal year. Again, does not mean that we're never going to come back to it. As a matter of fact, we absolutely are going to be on both of the two items that we are going to review as not achieved. Okay? And the last one, completed. This does mean that the action has been completed for the strategic plan timeframe. Okay? So no further action is needed. There might be something down the road that we identify fits nicely in that action item, but at this point in time, we believe that that particular action item has been completed for the timeframe of the ten-year strategic planning period. And I'll talk about which ones those are. There's two of those. Okay. So for FY twenty sixteen point five, we identified fifty-one action items that the city would be focusing on. And out of those fifty-one action items, forty-seven or ninety-two percent were achieved, again, for that fiscal year time period. We also identified that two were completed, which is four percent, and another two, again, four percent, are not achieved. So let me focus on the items that have been categorized as complete. So under the vision of accessibility, the action item of explore the possibility of bicycle-friendly community designation. That was completed. On November, in November of twenty sixteen, the League of American Bicycleists presented the city a bronze level award for its commitment to becoming a bicycle-friendly community. The award, it's quite an achievement. We went in there with the hopes of just being acknowledged that we applied, but the city persevered with a bronze level award and at the first time of application, which again, many communities gave us the feedback that don't be disappointed if you don't get a level of distinction the first time, but keep trying. Now, I want to add that without the dedication of members from the Active Transportation Group through Live Healthy DeKalb County, this award would not have been possible for the city. And the Active Transportation Initiative began the application process in February of twenty sixteen. So from February twenty sixteen to November, this group along with the city worked very hard in achieving that. And it was so excited to have that award presented to us at a city council meeting in November. So again, that one is completed. The second one that's completed is under the vision of sense of place. And the specific action item is celebrate the opening of the expanded library as an important and centrally-located gathering place. And the city did just that. The city helped publicize the opening and, and the reopening of the DeKalb Public Library by distributing flyers to area merchants, sharing the event on the city's Facebook page, the city website, and also by city staff attending, as well as council members, the opening and the re-grant opening. So several initiatives the city took in trying to ensure that we celebrate and acknowledge this historical moment for the community of opening a phenomenal new and improved library for all to enjoy. So again, that was completed. So really quickly, what was not achieved under the vision of community vitality in a vibrant downtown? The action item was support the work by interested stakeholders to develop a virtual business incubator. Now, the city staff continues to meet regularly with the Prowley-DeKalb group and initiative to determine which projects that stemmed from the ABC grant application process, which are going to be focused on and have the highest priority. And through this process, the virtual incubator has ranked a little lower in regards to priority of the projects and of the various numerous initiatives that the Prowley-DeKalb group is focusing on. So there are still members from city staff that are part of that group assigned to that particular project, the virtual incubator. However, at this time, that project has, again, taken a lower priority by the larger group, but city staff will continue to support the initiatives for that particular goal and action item. So it was not completed as we did not realize the actual opening of a virtual incubator. And finally, also not achieved, under vision of efficient quality and responsive service, the action item was acquire and maintain an efficient citywide enterprise software system that establishes the city as a leader in the implementation of technology and helps drive cost-effective governance. City council may recall that through the budget process, it was the wishes of the council that city staff does not pursue the ERP, RFPs, request for proposals, until a IT director is hired and can take the lead on that initiative. So again, this goal or action item was not achieved because once the IT director was hired in December, we then began to renew this action item and the project will continue into FY seventeen. So I'm happy to say that Mark Thorson, our IT director, is going to be taking the lead and has already begun to take the lead on putting together the request for proposals. So yay for all of us that Mark is taking that initiative on. So, all right, moving on. Here they are, the fifty-one action items for FY twenty sixteen point five by vision. So vision of sense of place, again, sixteen were achieved and one was completed. Vision of community vitality in a vibrant downtown, we have fifteen action items that were achieved and one not achieved. Vision of inclusiveness, two items were achieved. Vision of accessibility, two achieved and one completed. And then finally, vision of efficient quality responsive services, twelve action items achieved and one was not achieved. Totalling the fifty-one action items that the city focused on during that fiscal year. So I'm going to transition this to Lauren and we're going to highlight some of the great initiatives and community involvement that city staff had while working vigorously on these fifty-one action items. So again, this is a very high-level overview of some of the things that were achieved during this fiscal year.
Patty. Okay, so the first vision that we'll talk about is the sense of place. And the action item, one of the action items that we're using for an example is to identify and connect consistently with underrepresented populations and facilitate their meaningful participation in governance. So you can see this photo of two of our police officers traveling to visit students at one of our schools. And this is just one example of the various ways the city is reaching out to the community at different levels to make those important connections. Next, we have another vision of sense of place item. The action item is to develop aesthetic and image-enhancing projects and programs. In March two thousand sixteen, Nycor launched its Investing in Illinois initiative by replacing aging natural gas pipelines. And in October two thousand sixteen, at the direction of the city, Nycor contractors applied a new thermoplastic layer to the crosswalks throughout the downtown. And as you can see in the photo, obviously, it's a massive improvement. Not only does it look much nicer than what we had before, but it also adds an additional four to six years of life to those crosswalks. There, okay. Next, for a vision of a community, of community vitality in a vibrant downtown, our action item is to target unsafe and problem properties for blight removal and remediation. And you can see these statistics provided by the Crime Free Housing Bureau on their work to help make improvements throughout the community. And you can see on this next slide, this is an example of just one of the areas where improvements were made. So we had a couple different locations in the city where similar improvements were made. Next, for vision of community vitality in a vibrant downtown is the action item, consider a range of strategic investment options for the Egyptian theater to maximize its impact as a driving force of downtown commerce. And of course, as you're familiar with, the city engaged in a business planning and feasibility assessment for the Egyptian theater, and that includes recommended actions to increase the theater's operating potential. And development of this study included information gathering at the Egyptian theater and throughout the community, interviews with stakeholders, a user survey, and assessments of the current, the theater's current assets and liabilities. I'm going to turn it back over to Patty for the remainder of the visions. So she's going to talk about the vision of inclusiveness next.
Excellent, and I just want to highlight in the picture of the before and after of that home, it doesn't really do it justice, but the before picture, all of the screens were broken. The shutters were fallen, paint was chipping, the roof was in disarray, and it really looked very negatively upon the neighborhood. And the after picture, really fresh paint, new screens, shutters. So it, it just looked like a home that someone would be very proud of to walk down that street and see. So fantastic work by. So fantastic work by our Crime Free Housing Bureau. So going back to the next vision, vision of inclusiveness. So the action item, review and adjust city policies, practices, and programs to serve the core vision. The Bureau of Fire and Police Commission, BFPC, and the Human Resources Department's staff updated the BFPC rules and regulations in order to streamline the police and fire entry-level recruitment process. And, you know, that is something that should always be done periodically, but hadn't been done in quite some time. And as a result of improving those policies, rules, and regulations, the new procedure shortens the recruitment process by three months. So we are able to get sworn police and fire personnel on the streets three months sooner than with the changes. It also saves the city over $3,000 in written examination costs. And really, to capture that inclusiveness piece, it really, by increasing the efficiency, it increases the candidate pool, and it really diversified our outreach. So candidates are able to go through the process quicker, and they're, with a more efficient process, it makes it easier for a more diverse pool of candidates to apply. Under, another example very closely tied to the previous action item under vision of inclusiveness is the action item of review and adjust city policies, practice, and programs to serve the core vision. Again, the city launched a new applicant tracking system called NeoGov. Thank you so much for, under the leadership of Chris Randall, our Human Resources Director, and the diligent work of the HR staff, they were able to launch NeoGov Insight. That again, is the applicant tracking module. And NeoGov is assisting with achieving an inclusive and diverse candidate pool. And let me give you a little bit more about that. So NeoGov Insight now allows potential applicants to complete a job interest card directly through our website that allows a proactive and efficient source of communication between the candidate and the city. So candidates have the opportunity to select positions of interest, and they receive an email notification when the opening occurs. So it's no longer left up to chance and hope and faith that I happen to look on the city website when that dream job of mine happened to become available, or I happen to live next to someone that works for the city and gave me that heads-up. Anyone interested in a career with the city of DeKalb logs in. And keep in mind, this is a web-based system, so they, anywhere that there's free Wi-Fi, you can go to the public library and utilize their computers to fill out this job interest card and say, when this position becomes available, I want to be the first to know. And via an email, the applicant is notified that that job is available. This feature will aid the city in the reduction of advertising expenses, as well as enhancement of communication with an inclusive candidate pool, and the reduction of candidates, again, continually to need to check the website for future opportunities. The system, again, makes it convenient to apply for city positions. It is, the software is ADA compliant. It is accessible, as I mentioned, via anywhere you get free Wi-Fi. And luckily, our beautiful library has free Wi-Fi and computers that any resident can go to and now apply or fill out that job interest card. So again, kudos to the Human Resources Department for bringing that to the city of DeKalb. Vision of accessibility, let's talk about some highlights there. So the action item, explore the possibility of bicycle-friendly community designation, I already mentioned, distinction, I already mentioned that that item was completed. And again, you'll see from the picture there, the city is now the proud owner of that beautiful icon, which says bicycle-friendly community, 2016 to 2020, recognized by the League of American Bicycleists as a bronze distinction. Under vision of efficient quality and responsive services, the action item, communicate updates on current infrastructure projects to residents in a timely manner. Public Works has really done a fantastic job of achieving this action item. They're utilizing the city's social media platforms to inform citizens of lane closures, water main breaks, seasonal updates, to really keep the community engaged and informed on those items that would be of importance to a resident or business owner. So for instance, there was a main break affecting the 200 block of Milner, and that's the picture on the right. In addition to other updates that the Public Works Department has published, Public Works is engaging each division within the department to create a communication plan. And the plan will establish procedures for communicating timely infrastructure updates throughout this coming fiscal year as well. And you, there were many, many examples we could have shared with you on how well Public Works is communicating. Vision of efficient quality and responsive services, again, the action item ensures compliance with federal and state laws. Again, the Human Resources Department did a fantastic job of developing the city's new personnel manual and benefits handbook, which was approved by the city council and became effective on September 26, 2016. Human Resources Department also followed that up with training for all city staff, as well as city supervisors and managers, so that everyone knew what the expectations were, as outlined in the manual and benefits handbook. So we are very proud to say that we are, we have updated our policies, and they are in compliance with current state and federal employment legislation. Okay, in conclusion. So we focused on action items for 16.5. We are now going to take some of those action items for FY 2017. So in fiscal year 2017, the city has identified 82 action items that we will be focusing on. Fifty-five percent, or 45 of them, are carryover from the FY 16.5 timeframe. So again, to show that it's not a one-and-done type of program, the strategic plan is a living document through 2025. And there are many items that will carry over from fiscal year to fiscal year as we continue to work on various ways to address those visions. And new items that were not previously worked on in 16.5 are 37 action items, which is 45%. So we will definitely be coming back to you in about three months to give you the first quarterly update of fiscal year 2017 and share with you all the progress that the city has made as it relates specifically to the 2025 strategic plan. Any questions? Yes?
Alderman, favor.
Thank you for the update. I think it's impressive how much has been accomplished already. If citizens want to, you know, keep up to date on, you know, progress and so forth, where is this information on the website? Is it on the website yet?
It is not. We have our first quarterly update on the website. If you go to the homepage of the website, and directly on the left-hand side on the homepage, there is a section, the quick links, that's called DeKalb Strategic Plan 2025. If you click on that quick link, it will take you to a page that explains everything about the strategic plan, all the community engagement and feedback that we received and the process that got us to the plan. You can access the plan on that page, and you can access the report that we initially gave at about the halfway point of 16.5. Now that we've completed the fiscal year, we will, this week, be posting the complete update that was included in tonight's package. So it will always be accessible via the city website through the quick link on the homepage.
Okay, great, thanks.
Sure.
Other questions? Alderman, favor.
The Bike Friendly Community Award, was that, is that in a project considered completed for 16 and 1/2, or is that completed for the, are we considering that as the completion of the entire, the goal for the strategic plan?
So it's an action item, part of many goals within the vision. So that specific action item, which there's numerous action items under that goal and strategy, that the distinction, to achieve the distinction, is completed. However, all the work that's going to be generated from achieving that distinction is going to be covered throughout other areas of the strategic plan. For instance, the item that was brought to Public Works on the Complete Streets Program, that is part of the bicycle-friendly designation that the city received. And there will be many more updates focused on other visions or action items throughout the plan. So that one action item out of the several hundred is completed, but the work is not done.
Okay. And that's actually where I was going, was the Complete Streets. As we, you know, maybe implement that throughout the downtown area, or as we add other features that might enhance the bike-friendliness of the community, that might allow us to then, when this expires in 2020, to seek additional or higher certification?
Absolutely. And I sit on the board, representing the city for Live Healthy DeKalb County, and I am a committee member of the Active Transportation Group. We're already planning initiatives that are going to take place this year in 2017 that will help build a higher level of recognition, as well as achieve things that we, as a community, feel are important for bicycle safety and awareness.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions of Patty or Lauren at this point?
I just wanted to say that we, when we presented the first update back in 2016, the feedback that we received from council was very valuable, and I think it helped us strengthen this presentation. So feedback that you have, whether now, or if it's something that you think of after this meeting, we're definitely still looking to evolve and make this the highest level of value for council and the community.
And I would express appreciation for giving us a good overview of those 16 and 1/2, fiscal 16 and 1/2 activities. As we progress through fiscal year 17, and we'll be rapidly approaching fiscal year 18 budgeting, which the strategic plan will be driving, I'd like to suggest, if council is of a mind, to meet on either the first meeting in March or the first meeting in April, in a strategic planning discussion, to focus on the strategic plan and distilling those priorities for fiscal 18, goals and actions within those vision statements. And I would anticipate, as we progress, there may be modifications to the 2025 strategic plan framework that, as we talked initially, this will be a living document. And I think that focus, as I say, either first meeting of March, first meeting of April, I would suggest convening at a 1:00 hour to focus strictly on the strategic plan, primarily on the FY 18 initiatives. Is there preference for one of those two dates, either March 13th or April 20th?
You're going to make all meetings start at 1:00 from now on? I'm in favor of that.
No, this is the strategic planning discussion.
Think how much money we'd save in staff time, Mayor.
I, you know, have a slight preference for the April 20th.
April 10th.
April 10th, sorry.
Okay. That's the second week of April. Others, does that sound agreeable? And I think that'll put us toward, Anne Marie, as long as that is fitting into that FY 18 budget cycle.
It's a great timing with the fiscal year 18 budget cycle because we will not have yet met with Finance Advisory Committee, so this gives us the policy direction of where you want the budget to go for fiscal year 18. I think the timing is impeccable.
Excellent. So we will anticipate that April 10th meeting, a 1:00 special, I assume, Dean, that's a special meeting of council?
Yes.
That we call for the purpose of the strategic plan discussion. Anything further on the strategic plan? Seeing none, we'll anticipate that further meeting. But as Lauren suggests, if you have input, please share that with staff, as it might arise.
Question?
Yes. Alderman Baker.
What do you think about all the officials that are running for election, that they come and offer their input as well? Maybe they'll have some extra ideas?
They're certainly welcome.
Okay.
That's the April 10th, 1:00 hour. 2017 Street Maintenance Program. Let me turn to Director Alderman to introduce this topic.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I come before you this evening with a request for approval of our 2017 Street Maintenance Project. The program is based upon our funding for fiscal year 17, which was approved as part of the budget, and our needs for maintenance of our streets. We've provided a memorandum that gives a detail identifying the streets that we are going to, are proposing to perform maintenance on, and preliminary cost estimates before that week. I'd like to supplement that memorandum this evening with a brief presentation. I'll start with an overview of our current system, look at our current pavement condition, and we'll talk about specific streets that we're going to do, and the cost, and our vision for the future for our street maintenance program. We have about 129 centerline miles in the city of DeKalb's road network. The majority of that, the vast majority of that, is hot mixed asphalt. So when we're talking about roads in DeKalb, we're primarily talking about asphalt roads, although there are some concrete and brick. And one thing you'll see in this year's maintenance program is a recommendation to do some brick work on Second, Third, and Fifth Street. Pavement condition is very important when we talk about street maintenance. And pavement condition is the result of several factors. The design and construction of the road, the traffic volume that the road receives, and the weight of the traffic on that road. Weather has a very dramatic impact on pavement condition. As a pavement begins to crack, those cracks are made worse by the freezing and thawing of water that gets into there, into the cracks. And of course, then the maintenance that's performed on the roadways is also very important in the pavement condition. Knowing pavement condition is very important because it provides the basis for the decision-making, for identifying where we need maintenance, prioritizing that need, identifying the strategies to do the maintenance, and ultimately, the cost. And so the pavement condition information that the city has is going to provide us a good foundation for our future pavement management programs. And this is kind of the painting the picture beyond 2017. We'll talk about that pavement management program a little bit at the end. But right now, I want to stay on pavement condition. This graph shows the pavement condition over time using an indicator called Pavement Condition Index. I know that City Engineer Laskowski has presented this same type of information in the past. I wanted to look at it a little bit differently this year. The Pavement Condition Index is the information that we've been receiving from IMS, Infrastructure Management Services, who does an evaluation of our pavement condition every three years. If you were to look at a block or in the aggregate, the entire system, what you would see is that the pavement condition over that the pavement condition over time declines. And notice, uh, on that graph, that the, that the decline of pavement condition is, is rather, um, gentle in the first few years, and then it drops off, uh, be very, uh, very fast. So we have identified three different categories of pavement. If the pavement condition index is above eighty, we call that acceptable. Between sixty and eighty, it's pre-failing, and less than sixty, it's fail. And the maintenance strategies that we use for those different categories are different. If it's above eighty, we can do surface treatments at about, uh, a- at a very relatively low cost. And this can actually extend the life by five to seven years, and as you see on the graph, that would extend the life even beyond what you would get if you, if you waited to do a reconstruction, uh, and, and allow the, the pavement to go down to a forty or something. And that cost is one-eighth of the cost of the reconstruction, which is what you get when you have a, a pavement condition of less than sixty. So, the message here is, do the maintenance before the road gets to a condition where we have to reconstruct it and spend a lot more money. Okay? Unfortunately, we haven't been spending enough money in the past, and our current pavement condition is pretty bad. This map shows those three categories mapped in our city road network. And the histogram to the left shows the percentage of each of the categories. Notice that the eighteen percent is less than sixty on the PCI. When we compare that percentage to what it was in 2015, we see that we've gained about six percent in the number of roads that are in that failing category. Okay? We're not gonna be able to turn this around in one year, uh, but we do have a vision for the future. This year, we have, again, programmed a million, uh, three-plus for our road maintenance work. A million in TIF, and about, uh, three hundred and thirty thousand in, uh, local gas tax monies. And so compared, uh, to previous years, uh, this graph shows that we're a comparable, uh, not above average over the last fifteen years, where our average has been more around, uh, seven hundred thousand. Alderman Baker, do you have a question?
Yeah. Um, a few years back, when this presentation was made before you were here, um, I jumped in and asked for, uh, asked the question, what else could be done in TIF that is not being planned? And it completely changed the, uh, the mood of the meeting, and, uh, a whole bunch more was put into the TIF area roads, and that would be my question again.
Okay.
Uh, you're, I appreciate you putting an extra million dollars in, uh, into the TIF area for roads. I think that's news to, uh, a lot of people, uh, that were assuming we're only spending three or four hundred thousand total. And, uh, I'm happy to see that, but, um, we still have a TIF that has, i- is flush with cash, as I understand. And I guess it's because I'm only gonna be here a few more meetings. Is there anything else that we might be able to do this year that the council could consider to, uh, extra beefing up out of the TIF to do for roads within the TIF?
Alderman Baker, I'd like to jump in and answer that question, because I think this delves into a previous question at another meeting, uh, as well as an item that's on the city council agenda, uh, this evening. So what I had indicated is, we would be presenting a multi-year plan for your review, uh, for the council's review, uh, within a six-month period of time in anticipation preceding the budget process. Um, I know our Community Development Director, Jolynn Charlton, has indicated this, and I, I can't remember if it was at City Council, or if it was at Planning and Zoning Commission. This is really a policy decision, uh, of the council, as to how you want the TIF funds to be utilized. In the past, the city has primarily utilized TIF funds for public infrastructure. And with the Cornerstone Project, which is on the city council agenda, it is a little bit of a philosophical shift to be able to use that to, uh, encourage private development. And if you look at, and Director Charlton made this comment, if you look at the purpose of TIF, when TIF was originally created, the goal is to be able to increase the increment and increase the value of the property, which that does by infusing into a private development, and the analysis that was presented at the last meeting, uh, would accomplish that. So, I would recommend the council look at the full scope, and not just one particular year, because, uh, there could be additional private development projects, and it really comes out, down to a policy decision as far as where does the council wanna go. So my recommendation is, you make that policy decision when you look at the expiration of both TIFs, and where do you wanna direct that money, because that's gonna determine how those funds will be used over the next couple of years.
Thank you.
Looking at our program for, uh, 2017, we have, uh, five different locations within the TIF District Number One. Uh, on the, uh, this slide, that's shown in green, and then, uh, four different locations, uh, in the, uh, TIF District Number Two, the area is shown in red. And also noted on here are the, of the brick streets, uh, that will receive work. This will be, uh, the TIF funding, a million dollars, uh, estimated for that. And this year, we're going to, uh, use the motor fu- uh, I'm sorry, the local gas tax money in a different way than what we've used in the past. In the past, we've used that non-TIF funding to do two, three, four blocks in the non-TIF area. Uh, our research and our experience, uh, driving the roads, uh, indicates that there's a number of roads that need extensive patching. Uh, this map shows a location of three hundred and twenty-eight, uh, patches in the, uh, size range of, of five to ten feet long, and maybe three to five feet wide. Now, we know that we're not gonna be able to patch all of these, but our process is going to be, uh, having identified those, to now, uh, measure them and prioritize them, and for that, uh, two hundred and seventy to two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, uh, we want to address these patches. Okay? And that's, that's different. That's gonna give us a, a different look at our street maintenance program this year. Our hope is that we do identify a dedicated revenue source to fund this street maintenance program, or what I'm calling the pavement management program, in the out-years, that we'll be resurfacing these streets within the next three to five years. Okay? So that's why the strategy of patching has replaced the strategy of doing two or three blocks of non-TIF. And finally, uh, I'd like to show, uh, the, the, the numbers that we're looking at. Uh, we've had construction, uh, estimates, uh, for the street maintenance, and the patching work, which is shown here. We've used the twelve percent, uh, of that construction cost to estimate the engineering costs. Uh, that contract, uh, with, uh, engineer will be coming forward later this evening for our total cost there. And I'll, I'll, um, inform council tonight that this, at this point, these are just estimates. And as we get, uh, the bids, and as we get more information, more detailed cost estimate, we may make adjustments. Uh, some of the brick work that would be nice to do would be in the downtown area on Third Street. Uh, I'd like to be able to do that, uh, if we have additional money. Okay? And just in closing, I'd like to, uh, talk about the future and our pavement management program. Uh, this graphic shows, uh, kinda what we have vision for the future. You notice on the, on the bottom part of this slide is that histogram that shows the investment that we've been making for about fifteen years now, of about seven hundred thousand dollars on average. That investment has got, uh, gotten us a pavement condition which is not satisfactory, and is continuing to decline. If we decide that we want to improve the pavement condition, that's gonna create the need for future investment at a higher level. That difference between what we're investing now, and what we'll be investing in the future, is a funding gap, and we recognize that. That is a gap. There are certain ways that we can fill that gap, through new revenue sources, savings, debt, or a combination of those. So, going back to what I said in the beginning, that pavement condition information is the critical piece, and we have that piece, to be able to go forward on a prioritization and a multi-year schedule of cost on what it's gonna take to do, uh, an adequate job of pavement, pavement management, uh, for the city, and what the result will be, and what time it will take to achieve that result in terms of the improvement of condition. And with that, I'd like to open it up for questions.
Questions of Tim at this point. Alderwoman, Noriko.
Thank you. Um, walking my dog every af- every morning and evening, I have a good opportunity to take a look at sidewalks and curbs and streets, in, at least the south part of town. And, uh, are curbs considered part of sidewalk maintenance?
No, they would be, uh, part of the street maintenance, when, uh, but, but not on an overlay. It's mostly, uh, associated with reconstruction. Uh, when we're going through the detailed cost estimate, once we hire an engineer, and they're going through and doing the, the final design, they will look for, uh, curbs that need to be replaced, and they can include it at that time.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And also, um, while it's, it seems relatively insignificant, I've also noticed the, um, yellow no parking stripes, and many of those, you know, are virtually worn away.
Yeah.
Where does that factor into this?
Yeah. Our Street Division has a striping program, uh, that we do on an annual basis. Uh, so I would encourage residents, uh, to call the Public Works Department if they know of, including yourself.
I was just gonna say, can, can I send Public Works Director an email?
Absolutely. And, and let us know. We systematically go through those, and we're always looking for those, but, uh, we can't know everything, so definitely call us.
Well, and, you know, in, in, you know, my area, e- there are several schools, and, you know, softball fields, and so, you know, there's no, parking designations are pretty important. Okay, thank you.
But that is an, an in-house operation that we do. Yeah.
Thank you, Tim. Very good. Tim, you mentioned wanting to gain council approval. I assume that's in an action item on our, um, regular meeting agenda this evening?
Uh, no, the city engineer, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, hiring an engineer to do this work, uh, but, uh, I believe that it's, it's typical, uh, that we approve the streets as they're proposed here.
Okay. So, you're wanting a, a motion to approve at this point, but we normally don't take action in the council.
The item that's before the city council at the committee, the whole, is intended to facilitate discussion of the, uh, proposed list of streets. On your regular agenda, there is an action item that would authorize execution of a contract for a, a civil engineer to undertake the engineering of the street list. So there's not a motion required by council, but if you, at this meeting, but if you approve the action item on the next agenda, on the city council agenda, it would essentially also approve the street list.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Baker?
At, um, one of our previous meetings, I recall, that, uh, it looked as if we needed nine million dollars today to catch everything up, and then a maintenance program after that. And I remember the brainstorming, uh, we, we were curious about maybe a, pick a number, fifteen-year bond for the nine million, and then the payments, uh, on that, if we're gonna actually, because of the, uh, the exponential deterioration, it seems logical that if we go through and bond this out, that we're going to save a lot of money, and that we could schedule, um, a seven hundred thousand dollar a year payment to fix everything, catch it right up, and maybe we, maybe we'd be okay. Has that been put in writing in the pencil push, to see if that is the answer?
I think there's two, I'm gonna respond to that question in two ways. Number one, uh, Director Holdeman is working on the asset management plan, and will be, uh, bringing that back to council. Uh, we already brought the request for proposal. We've received, I believe, four proposals, so as far as the contract in the future will be coming with a primary focus on streets. If you recall, asset management plan dealt with streets, fleet, facilities, and stormwater management. Um, so, if at that point, then, a consultant is hired, they do the report, and I'm gonna use the analogy of the water infrastructure plan, uh, is once the coun- once the consultant had completed that plan, brought it back to council, there were probably five or six different options that were presented, and then the council chose what was going to be the, uh, funding level. So, on the first part of this, I think if you, one of the things I know Director Holdeman is looking at with whatever consultant is hired, is to look at the, a possibility of going out for bonds, but tied specifically into streets. And I think then, if you do go in that direction as a policy direction, you have to look at, how is that paid back? And I think you wanna make the policy decision first, of how much philosophically do you wanna spend every year on streets. Secondly, um, the other part of the, way I would answer that question is in relation to TIF. So, this is where the TIF phase-out plan and policy direction also comes into play, because we have two TIFs that are expiring. Up to this point, with the lives of the TIF, the city has basically done a pay-as-you-go. So, we've drawn down fund balances, or had enough revenue to pay. With the TIFs closing, in order to accomplish some projects, depending on whichever direction the council goes on bigger projects, uh, we think what is gonna happen is you would need to go out for bonds, so that you have that pool of money to be able to do those projects. Otherwise, you're not gonna be able to cover some of the bigger-ticket projects, because the revenue's not gonna be there to the last couple of years of the TIF. So these are two potential bonds that the council would consider. I think it's in the best interest of the council to have all the information, so you can make that policy decision as to where you wanna go on both these items.
And, and I would just add to that, that a significant component of the asset management plan is the financial plan. And so, uh, some of the proposals we're looking at actually have a financial firm in the lead. And so that, that's very interesting, and it would speak to, uh, your concerns, Alderman Baker, uh, with regard to looking at the options and what the long-term financial benefits are at, for different strategies.
One last question. Um, I, I'm not settled in my mind how this all turned out. When, when we voted through the gas taxes, and, and there were two times, we, I think we went up two and a half cents one time, and only a penny and a half the other time, or penny, or whatever. It, it, it oughta be a little bit higher, but that's for a future council to decide. But we tried to make sure that it was always going to be dedicated just to streets, uh, to supplement which, um, the future. And didn't some rule come up recently where you couldn't do it directly, and we had to throw some towards the airport or something? I mean, how, how can, I mean, you're talking about future funding sources? Other than my favorite of putting a vehicle sticker in the twenty-seven thousand cars in town, um, gas tax is the most logical. Uh, I mean, how can, how can future councils be sure that, when they start debating the funding source, that it sticks?
The, uh, change in law that you're referencing is the constitutional amendment that passed by a friend in this past year, known as the lockbox amendment. So with the passage of that, um, among the permitted uses that are, uh, the funds that the city gains through fuel taxes can be used for is the maintenance of transportation facilities such as airports. So a component of the city's budget for FY17 includes using a portion of the motor fuel tax, um, the, the local gas tax, I should say, not the motor fuel tax, for, uh, airport expenses, and replaces general fund dollars that were previously being utilized for that. In terms of how the council can address that prospectively, it's a question when the council completes a budget, or when you undertake a project of what you direct the funding received by the city towards. Um, to the extent that you're undertaking a multi-year project, if the city, uh, borrows funds, as you had talked about earlier, if the city bonded a project and pledged a certain revenue towards that, that, that could address that. But in the most, uh, in the whole, it's the city council, uh, directing, when you prepare your budget, how you want the funds to be allocated.
Other questions? Alderwoman, Noriko.
I recognize that current funding structure has dictated that, in the bulk of the street repairs have been done in the TIF districts. But I will tell you that I get significant But I will tell you that I get significant comments about the quality of the streets in areas other than that. And so I'm looking forward to getting planning information that will indicate, you know, when and how the rest of the city, you know, can be able to continue to drive on our roads.
Our pledge is to provide that information this year.
Thank you.
And to bring forward to City Council options for funding that plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Other questions, discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to turn to public participation. Michael Balling is wishing to address the town.
Good evening, council. My name is Michael Balling. I live at 219 Lexington Street. Some of you may know me as the floppy hat guy that you've seen around town inspecting our streets, as my past role as project implementation engineer. I'm here today as a concerned citizen about the proposed street maintenance program. I would like to provide my information to help the, make you an informed decision about this current proposal. My concern is the current proposal does not include resurfacing of any streets outside the TIF district. This includes patching. I'll have to disagree with Mr. Holdeman, since I've been here for 17 years. If I can remember right, since 2012, we've patched, 2012, '13, '14, and '15, we've patched over $250,000 each of those years, and done very little resurfacing. Only until last year, when the city engineer and I looked at the cost benefit, and we determined that it would be better to redo two streets and do some patching with the money that's left over, so that we were cutting into that list of streets that needed to be fixed. This last fall, the engineering department used the Street Pay Pro software, historical data, to assess the conditions of roads in development, a proposed of this year's maintenance strategy. The data gathered included pavement type, thickness, maintenance history, and other additional metrics. The following four streets were estimated for resurfacing. None are in the proposal. Hayes from Taylor to Alden, Persimmon, Knowles Avenue South-North, Dogwood from Knowles Avenue North to Ivy, and Moraine Terrace from Russell Road to East End. One or more of these street segments were planned to be estimated and included in the maintenance strategy. As I noted, none are included. Completing resurfacing of these low-volume streets will last 20 years with some minor cracking. You saw the graph of how the pavement index drops, but on local streets with the volumes, where there's not a lot of volumes, they last more than 12 years. They'll last up to 20 with some maintenance. So the investment in something that's going to last 20 years, rather than patching, which is only going to last three to five years, that's not cost-effective. Also noted, there's a line item for $20,000 worth of patching on Andy Glidden Road. This item was a specific item that was to be bid separately. This is in the northbound left-turn lane of Andy Glidden Road. With the high volume of truck traffic, there's a lot of rutting. The street department last year had to go out and grind the rut because it was unsafe for motorcycles to go through that lane. They would fall over or tip over. Also, the snowplowing would be an issue. We propose to do an inlay concrete, white topping project, which means milling it out and putting in a stronger concrete base there. That is not something that any just random concrete contractor can do. It needs to be specifically contracted and pulled out of the project and done by itself.
Michael, you're at three and a half minutes. I'd ask you to...
In conclusion...
Reasonably.
In conclusion, is this current proposal the best way to use our precious funds when our infrastructure is in such need of repairs? I would like to offer my experience and knowledge to anyone that would like to ask me questions or talk after this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Barry Schrader, I assume you wish to address the committee of the whole?
City Council, Public...
Okay, okay. That'll come in our next regular meeting. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the committee of the whole? Okay. We will move next to the recess for executive session. I would like to ask for a motion to hold an executive session to discuss personnel as provided for in 5I LCS 120/2C1, and to discuss collective bargaining as provided for in 5I LCS 120/2C2.
Still moved.
It's been moved by Alderman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Fenukan. All those wrote, call.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fenuken?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you. We welcome green as promptly as we can, following the recess of the executive session. We'll move to that large council. Can we move? Yes, sorry.
Hello, thank you. Sorry, Ma, they came up and gave it to me and said it was for Noriko, so sorry.
I was across the street.
Thank you. I'll deal with these, yeah.
Don't want to put any of the money out, we got another ten.
I don't know, I don't know how reliable this is.
I didn't get used to how they would see this guy.
I didn't get used to how they would see this guy.
I think about four years.
Four years, yeah, yeah.
I have, well, I'm still here.
How are you doing? I live in Rochelle, but I shouldn't know her, but I can say that.
And then from there, I'm going to a fraternity for, to do a training there, so, yeah.
Oh, he was on the county board?
Provada?
Really?
Mary Provada?
I didn't know that, Chuck Provada, that's right.
Yeah.
Did you overhear the part where she said, "How is the perfect angel straight and student, never day in trouble"?
No.
Oh, okay.
Same place, yeah.
Like I said, mom's been there.
She's been there.
She's been there.
Say it out loud. Thirty-four. Yep, same place, I guess. Like I said, mom's been in the town, she's been in the town. She's been very active. Marches and protests and everything. We had a good old time, me and her, so.
I'll grab you one of my cards. Turn your dollars, you can move.
I'm good.
Hey, Steve?
The boy's again, he's working at the top of the profession.
Tell them.
Oh, my, they cool. All right, all right, I like this. I can carry this around my wallet.
Do you have it here received?
Hi there. Yeah, I see that, thank you.
The key that I misplaced like eight years ago.
See, the key I had.
But I'm sure I have it home on the desk in the box of keys.
See, I was given the key on day one, and then I forgot that I had a key.
Well, wait a minute, does this serve as my handy?
You're not what? Oh, you're a. That was in your drawer.
You want to see the one I've been carrying around?
Uh, G four, that's corner stuff.
I like this one better.
Yeah. Tall, tall. Was that the three A, four thirty, yes, Steve?
I don't have that shirt on, I'm sure it's just.
Oh, I can get that here.
You gotta get out of here. Thank you. Fancy.
Yeah, so unless, um, individuals want to do a consent.
Oh, this is yours.
I haven't been here late at night for a long time. I remember several years ago, I was here doing work.
I haven't really either, they sometimes said they were decent.
Tempered.
And the police rushed in, I felt like I had a heart attack or something, because I was slipping, snoring away. And they saw me on camera, and they rushed over. I heard movement, the building, so, oh, and they locked in, like, are you okay? Yes, I was sound. It's four in the morning, can I see him, brother, for a second?
Yeah, they're getting this back.
She wants to speak, it ain't worth it. So she'll come eat me at the, uh, G four.
So, you know? There's a tax, left ear, right. See, I can tell you the answer to that question.
And, well, let's just put.
Thank you, appreciate it. Yes, I have it somewhere, I said. I have, like, janitor's, that's a, I mean, literally, one of my key rings is this thing. I can bring it in if you need it. No, which, right, oh, this is, this is my emergency set, so. This gets me on my vehicles. I will bring it to you. Thank you. That's why, that's why you get these, like, you're.
Proper, yeah.
Prox or NFT? NFT is a type of code.
Every HR.
Like hotel cards?
And very schrader. Just common?
Call it a first word tax, sorry.
Five dollars.
Excellent, five dollars. You know how much money they, they put up at eight?
I didn't hit them.
Every week, and be putting corners in.
So, I'm gonna be at them when I call them up.
It's all right, I'll be good for you. He usually comes prepared for me.
Just so they know. Does that sound fair? See this right here?
Almost all the time. That's what I said.
It's replacing this one in my wallet.
Let me convene the regular meeting of city council and, um, February twenty-seventh, and ask for a roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Here.
Finukin?
Here.
Markort?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Noriko?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Ray?
Here.
Eight present?
Thank you. I'll ask Officer Pulos to come forward and please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have the agenda before us. I would note that public participation, I'd be adding as item E four on the agenda. I think our originally published agenda did not have that item, but I'll add item E four as public participation. Any other additions or deletions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda. Some moved by Alderman Snow, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Markort, uh, roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finukin?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Okay. Moving to our proudly DeKalb features this evening, we have Safe Passage Prevention Program Director Sarah Slavinas is here to provide information regarding services they provide to citizens of DeKalb. Sarah?
Hi, good evening and thank you for having me. Um, I just want to start off by apologizing, I am going to have to leave after this, I've got another meeting to get to, so forgive me for that. But I did just want to share with council and with everybody who's here, all of the good work that Safe Passage is doing, and kind of explain the depth and breadth of the services that we provide here in DeKalb County. So, many people, when they think of Safe Passage, think of a domestic violence shelter, maybe a twenty-four hour hotline, and I think a lot of people don't realize that in addition to those two crucial services, which both operate twenty-four hours a day, we also provide counseling to men, women, and children who have experienced any form of power-based personal violence. So whether that's child sexual abuse, sexual assault, dating or domestic violence, and whether that happened last week or twenty years ago. So, in addition to those services, they're all free and confidential regardless of income. We believe very strongly that regardless of, if you're making a hundred thousand dollars a year, you should not be charged for having been the victim of abuse. So, to further explain our services, we also provide medical and legal advocacy. So, the medical advocacy portion is where if somebody goes to any one of the local hospital, um, at any point during the day, we'll have a medical advocate who will go out there and provide crisis intervention, support, referrals, and additional resources, basically anything that that victim needs. We help them through the legal process if they're seeking to get an order of protection or civil no contact, stalking stay away orders, any of that. We also provide a partner abuse intervention program where we are working with men and women who have been arrested for domestic battery. Um, it's a twenty-six week psychoeducational group, and the goal really is to help ensure that they don't reoffend. Um, and finally, we do prevention, which is really the thrust of my job, and I work with children K through twelve about child sexual abuse prevention education. I work with junior high and high school students about teen dating violence, do a lot of guest lecturing here on campus at NIU as well as at Kishawaki, um, and do some professional trainings. So, just to kind of go over briefly the hours of service that we have provided here in DeKalb County. We've, you know, provided six hundred and ninety-five, um, clients with over seventeen thousand hours of services. And just in case there is any kind of, um, misunderstanding or assumption that a lot of our, you know, clients are coming from place or than DeKalb, I went ahead and broke down the numbers for the people that we serve right here in the city of DeKalb. And we have provided, in the last fiscal year, two hundred and ninety clients from DeKalb City, um, with, you know, a variety of services. That's about forty-two percent of, you know, all of the clients that we serve are coming right here from the city of DeKalb. Um, and that equates into seven thousand five hundred and thirty hours of free and confidential services. In addition to that, I personally have worked with over four thousand students in the prevention program, as I mentioned before. And finally, I want to just acknowledge the partnership that we have with DeKalb Police Department. Um, we've had, you know, wonderful collaborations with Chief Lowry and his officers on a number of initiatives, including a sexual assault response team. Um, we are working right now on a lethality assessment program where his police officers will be thoroughly trained um, and will be, you know, responding to calls of domestic violence and screening right there to see, is this relationship going to end up in a potentially lethal resolution? And if so, they can immediately connect for services at Safe Passage. We also provide roll call trainings, and they participate in our order of protection monthly meetings. So, now that you know, kind of a snapshot of what we do and how much we're doing here in DeKalb, I just want to let you know that Sexual Assault Awareness Month is coming up in April. And I'm hoping, calling on the city council members, um, fire department, police department, to consider getting involved. The first event that we're having is a Walk a Mile in Her Shoes event where men and women are invited to wear high heels and walk a mile. We're going to be in the convention center this year at NIU. Um, and the point of that is really just to highlight that no matter what somebody is wearing, no matter how much they've had to drink or where they're at, does not mean that they have somehow brought upon themselves victimization of sexual violence. So, there are eight of you up there, you can have a team of four for just one hundred dollars, and all of that will go to support, of course, Safe Passage. In addition to that, we are also doing Take Back the Night, which is an opportunity for survivors of sexual assault to speak out and have their community kind of envelop them and say, "It's not your fault, we do believe you, and we do care about your experience." So, with that being said, um, I can leave some flyers and some brochures, I hope to see you all at our, at every event possible. Um, but yeah, certainly, you can always check out our website for more information if you'd like to get involved in either one of those. We do have men's high heels, size shoeses, or size shoes. So, don't worry, you don't have to go find your own, we've got them ready, they are four inches, so.
Sarah, dates of those two events?
Yeah, again, so April first is the Walk a Mile in Her Shoes event. We're kind of calling that the kickoff to Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Um, and then the second, or the last Tuesday in April, which is the twenty-fifth, will be the Take Back the Night march. We're hoping for good weather because you will be doing a little bit of a walk, um, so that's why it's kind of at the tail end of the month.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And you have, uh, brochures you sent?
I do, I've got some flyers about the, um, Walk a Mile, and I've got some brochures in English and Spanish, we do have Spanish-speaking staff who can help those who don't have English as a primary language.
If you wish to leave copies for the city clerk?
Okay.
Um, or you can deliver those here at city hall for distribution.
Okay, I'll do both, I think, all right? Thank you.
Moving next to residential property rehabilitation. Community Development Director Joellen Charlton is going to provide an overview of a rehab project in the city that the city has been working on located in the five hundred block of North Seventh Street. Joellen?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, um, as the mayor indicated, we would like to describe for you and the citizens tonight uh, what we consider to be a code enforcement success story that involved resources from, uh, a number of departments, our police and fire and community development departments, with support and assistance from our legal, uh, council to accomplish. The address of this property is located at five oh nine North Seventh Street, and as you can see on the attached exhibit, uh, we have a, a view of the before on the left-hand side and the after elevations for this project.
The address of this property is located at 509 North 7th Street, and as you can see on the attached exhibit, we have a view of the before on the left-hand side and the after elevations for this project, which show new siding and new roof and a lot of significant improvements to the exterior of the home. I say this because this project very easily could have resulted in action that's similar to some of the other projects that we have that result in demolition of the property, a vacant lot, expenditure of resources. And instead, what we have here is an example of city staff working with the property owners to achieve something a little bit differently. As many of these types of cases begin, it begins with a well-being check on the resident that lived at the home. Upon trying to gain access to do a more thorough investigation of the property, we were not successful, and it was necessary for the city to obtain a search warrant to do that type of inspection. As part of that inspection, in addition to some of the exterior issues that were noted on the building showing some unsafe and unpermitted types of work, both on the exterior, the conditions on the interior of the property were also substandard, showing issues of water and mold, and a lot of hoarding issues were also identified in this particular site. The city, as part of this project, was able, again, to work with family members of the occupant who lived in this, in this particular location. He had some disabilities, and through working with the property, or with the families, his family members, we were able to help them identify permanent housing in a location that was better suited to serve his disabilities. We also, as part of our review, learned that this was a prime candidate for a potential demolition of the site. And again, because we were able to get the family involved in looking at some alternatives, we determined that it would be better to work with them on alternate solutions to a demolition and having another vacant lot in town. We worked with an auction company who was interested in doing a sale of the property, and again, the family was involved in this process as well. And we also talked to a lot of potential purchasers who expressed interest in this property, in this, in purchasing this property. One of those interested parties happened to be an individual that lived or owned property across the street that was tired of looking at a constant state of disarray on this property. So he was the person that was ultimately responsible for acquiring this property and investing his own private dollars in the redevelopment of this property. He completed the renovation of this property back to a single-family home. So this is an example of a single family that at some point in history had been converted to a multi, I think it was a two-unit. The prior, in the first picture on the left, you can see there's actually two doors that led to the two units within the apartment, or to the apartment that was upstairs. As part of this redevelopment, the owner was required to convert it back to a single-family home because the non-conforming status of the property had expired. So the work that he did to improve this property went from a two and renovated it back to a one-unit development. So again, I just wanted to, to provide you with this overview of what we consider to be a successful redevelopment for using a code enforcement process in the community, one that didn't involve a heavy-handed legal action to demolish the property. We got the family involved. We looked for code compliance as opposed to that stricter rule that I think sometimes people think is the only way that we do business in the community. It's a partnership. The, the family was willing to work with us, and we, we used that to our advantage and ended up with a much nicer property that's not, another vacant lot in our city. So I just wanted to present that. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions of Joellen Alderman Noriko?
What's the current status of the home? The individual who bought it, is he living in it or renting it?
They're going, the intent was to rent it. I believe it's still, the permit is still out, so we don't yet have final inspections and final occupancy of it, but they are working towards that.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Joellen, for that very interesting and creative update. Moving to our next item, we have a crime update, the DeKalb Police's annual report. I'll turn to Police Chief Gene Lowry.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Administration, and Community. Tonight, I'm going to go over some of the details in regard to our 2016 DeKalb Police Department Annual Report, but the primary focus of tonight is going to be in regard to crime. For the community, I'd like you to know that the annual report in its total is on our webpage now. It was downloaded today, so if you have questions or inquiries in regard to that, please, please go to that. Any further questions can be directed to me. Across our country, there, there are categories of crime that are reported under the Uniform Crime Reporting Act, which is a federal program. Most police agencies only report their Part 1 crimes for a variety of reasons, but one being transparency the most. We report both Part 1 and Part 2 crimes, which I'll give you tonight. The first, the first slide you're going to see is a summary of Part 1 crimes since 2012. As you can see, from 2012 to 2015, we had a downward trend in Part 1 crimes. Then in 2016, a significant increase. That increase amounted to 341 more incidents or a 26% increase in Part 1 crimes. I have to tell you that in my 38 years in law enforcement, I have never seen such a dramatic increase in crime in Part 1s. Let me tell you a little bit about Part 1 crimes. Part 1 crimes are the most serious offenses as categorized across the country. And when, when we look at trying to categorize crime across the country, you have to understand that each state, each locale, if you will, has a different set of laws. Although they're very similar, the UCR is designed, the program itself, is designed to bring those laws into some semblance where they can be compared across the country to give not only our country, but our communities across the country a kind of, an idea of how crime is trending. Some of the crimes include homicide, criminal sexual assault, robbery, aggravated battery and assault, arson, human trafficking. And I'll tell you a little bit more specifically about those, but in all Part 1 crimes, we saw some increases, some more than others. The greatest change in Part 1 offenses in 2016 was an increase in property crimes as compared to 2015. Burglaries increased by 63 incidents, thefts by 253, motor vehicle thefts by 14, for a total of 330 more incidents as compared to 2015. Now burglary, theft, and motor vehicle theft accounted for 97% of the increase in Part 1 crimes. That's pretty significant. I also believe it's a reflection of where we stand as, as communities across the state stand currently in Illinois. Of the category, burglaries to unsecured vehicles accounted for the most significant increase in crime in 2016. Now burglaries to motor vehicles are accounted for within the theft category. However, and I'll go into this in a little bit more in the next slide, but I think the one thing that we can take from a prevention point of view, and I hope the community's ears are wide open on this, burglaries to unsecured motor vehicles accounted for the greatest increase. Of all the motor vehicle burglaries, less than 1%, actually less than .05, right at .05%, were with force. Almost all of them were people going into unlocked motor vehicles. So please, I would ask you on behalf of our community, lock your cars. In 2016, 73 juvenile offenders were charged with 149 Part 1 crimes. And I want to touch base a little bit with you to maybe emphasize what I perceive as a significant problem in a couple of ways in regard to juvenile offenders. The 2016 most in-contact juveniles with the DeKalb Police, by in-contact, I mean those, those juveniles who we deal with the most from a policing perspective. The top 25 juvenile offenders had an average age, I'm sorry, top 20 juvenile offenders had an average age of 15.9 or 16 years of age. The top 20 juvenile offenders accounted for 130 arrests for Part 1 crimes in the city of DeKalb. The top 20 juvenile offenders have generated, and I, I want you to hear this number, 1,045 DeKalb Police reports. There are countless incidents involving juveniles every year that don't rise to the level of a, of a report. But to know that these 20 have generated over 1,000 is staggering. I picked the top female and top male juvenile offenders just to give you, you know, the bird's eye view of what the police officers are dealing with on the street. The top female juvenile offender was 14 years of age. She had 104 contacts with the police and 18 arrests. I hope you heard that. 14 years old, 18 arrests, 104 contacts. The top male offender was 17 years of age, had 95 contacts with the police, 12 arrests, and has been linked to 83 offenses. I think it's pretty clear that despite some of our efforts to intercede in regard to juvenile crime, juvenile crime's going off the charts. Now we're going to take a look at Part 2 crimes. Now this is a category of crimes that most police departments account for and report, but they don't report it to the community. This is going back as well to 2012. And again, you can see the trend going down from 2012 to 2015, and again, a slight rise in 2016. Nonetheless, some of these categories within this Part 2 crimes category itself, or some of these offenses within the Part 2 crimes, are disconcerting. This, this rise this year in 2016 was a 4% increase in Part 2 crimes or 263 more incidents. Part 2 crimes consist of crimes such as battery, deception, criminal damage, deadly weapons, sex offenses, offenses involving children, a variety of drug offenses, disorderly conduct, interference with the police, intimidation, kidnapping and abduction, violation of sex offender registration laws, and a whole host of other offenses. For me, the offenses involving children rose fairly dramatically by 31 incidents. The other category that really bothers me, probably from an officer's safety perspective more than anything, is interference with a police officer. In 2016, we had 178 acts of interference with a police officer. That was 44 more than the preceding year. Please take a look at this slide. These are weapons offenses as compared to 2015. Within our community, we had 79 weapons offenses in 2016. That was a 34% increase compared to 2015. What does a weapons offense mean? It means an offense such as unlawful possession of a firearm by a felon, aggravated discharge of a firearm, and similar offenses. That's a fairly dramatic increase. Shots fired calls within our community also increased to 57 from 41 in 2015. So 57 in 2016 equated to a 39% increase. And I'm going to kind of tip my hat a little bit here because I'm going to, I'm going to throw out some information to you that's maybe a little anecdotal from the podium here, but I'm going to try and tie it all together for you. As we look at crime across our state, it's important that we look at crime in communities that host major state universities. So when I look at weapons offenses, I'm sure many of you are familiar with the city of Carbondale, that hosts, the host city for Southern Illinois University. Carbondale, in 2016, had 172 weapons offenses, quite a few more than we did, not, not mitigating the fact that I believe that these weapons offenses we had were, were any less serious. But Carbondale's a city of 23,000 people in Southern Illinois with a student population somewhere around 14,000 university students. And again, this is no way trying to implicate crime and students. Also, in regard to weapons offenses, the DeKalb Police took 73 weapons off the street this past year. 63 of those were related directly to some crime. I'm sorry I moved that slide ahead, but those pictures on there weren't taken from some internet site or by surfing the web. Those were pictures of weapons we had taken into custody. I hope you noted that there was an assault rifle in that mix. This next slide is about policing challenges in 2016. And I chose these to try to represent to you what I think our community is experiencing from a level of maybe what I would call distress within the community. The first category is suicidal subject calls. There we experienced a significant rise of 31% from 2015 to 2016, noting that we had 204 incidents of suicidal subjects. Please contemplate that. Now if you drop down to, to the mental subject calls, which is just below it, almost at the bottom of the page, we had 85 of those as well in 2016. So if you add that 85 and 204 together, you're talking about 289 situations where police officers were called to deal with someone who was at a point in time where they were in such crisis, they were either threatening to take their life, or they were in some way involved in an emotional or behavioral situation that they couldn't control and the police had to intervene. Throughout our country, police officers are involved in the use of deadly force, more with the mentally ill or people with behavioral disorders than any other category or any other demographic. That exceeds all demographics based on race and any other. You know, Sarah was just here a few minutes ago from Safe Passage, and we, we do have a great partnership with them. But when I look at our domestic calls for service, our domestics increased fairly sizably in regard to specific calls for service. They were up 166 compared to 2015, or 1,396 domestic calls for the police. That's, if we average that out over 365 days, that's four a day. Police officers have a greater chance of being injured or killed in domestic disturbances and traffic stops than almost any other category. Also, throughout my career, and in this year, in 2016, I should say, the three homicides that we had, two of the three were relationship or domestic-based. So the program that Sarah had mentioned, the lethality assessment program that we're engaged in with Safe Passage, is, is a program that allows a police officer to be trained and learn how to implement an on-scene survey or instrument to determine if that person, that victim of that domestic situation, is at great risk up to and including something that might cause their death. Very worthwhile program. Again, I would say to you, these policing challenges in 2016 has some, has some dire concerns for us, especially in a, in a county and in a community that has little or no mental health resources. Just in general, during 2016, the DeKalb Police responded to 45,566 calls for service. This was a 3% increase as compared to 2015. We also handled or processed a little over 22,901 calls. Now to give you a comparison for that, I pulled the 2015 data for the Champaign Police Department. Now bear in mind, Champaign has a population of 86,000 and some change and 125 police officers. DeKalb is just about half of that. We had more calls per officer annually at 679 in 2015 as compared to the Champaign Police Now, this news is not good news. As a result of reviewing the crime throughout 2016, and I got to be honest with you, every week, every month, every quarter, and at the end of the year, I was constantly looking at the crime, trying to figure out a way to intervene and change the course. No matter what we No matter what we implemented, we weren't having much luck. But due to the increase in crime, I decided it was time for me to consult with the police chiefs from these communities that host major state universities. So I put a call out to those chiefs, and we agreed to host a summit, which we did earlier this month in Champaign to discuss these trends. In regard to these trends, we're looking at not only what we've seen observationally and based on our experience, we're looking at what we could do to reverse them. The specific crime trends that the police chiefs, and they came from Champaign, Urbana, Bloomington-Normal, Carbondale, EIU, WIU, they came from all over the state. Excuse me. In general, here's what they saw. Across the board, fairly sizable increase in property crimes. Across the board, a great concern for the level of gun violence. Across the board, an increase in armed encounters with the police. Carbondale, that town of 23,000 in Southern Illinois, had a police officer shot in the face with an assault rifle this past summer in 2016. He's recovered well, but he's lost one of his eyes as a result of that injury. The police chiefs were seeing a significant increase in the heroin epidemic. Last but not least, and one that I think is probably impacting our community the most, is juvenile crime with no accountability at home and no accountability in the courts. Another area that the chiefs had some concern about across the state, a couple of university communities had it for different reasons than we would, was the significant rental property surplus. Another factor that dovetailed into that rental property surplus was the destabilization of neighborhoods. Let me tell you what that means for us. When I look at properties that were traditional student properties, especially those in the highest density areas on our northwest side of our community, student properties are, you know, designed with efficiencies in mind for a student. However, when, for whatever reason, enrollments decline, or there's not the opportunity that people would perceive that would be in this community, those rental property vacancies occur and the surpluses increase. The one thing that it's good for is, for people who are low-income or living in poverty, low rental rates, or rates of rent per square foot, are very attractive, and they know families can come here and they can find housing that's probably better off or better than what they came from. But what it does in neighborhoods like that northwest side is, that was designed for university students, is it begins to change the whole demographic. I can only say that I see it every day when I come to work and I come through that side of town. There are more yellow school buses in those neighborhoods now than there have ever been. So you have children and families migrating into that neighborhood that have no resources, no stores, no parks, no services. Many of them are impoverished and have no way to transport themselves from one location to another. This aspect of destabilization is a hotbed for police and fire services. In closing on this slide, the other contributing factor that I believe all chiefs are unanimous about, the lack of a state budget, its impact on the poor, the defunding of social service agencies for people at risk, are devastating our communities. Policing neighborhoods in poverty and neighborhoods that have little opportunity are extremely difficult, and they were viewed as key factors in our crime problem. At this summit, the chiefs voiced their concerns, and probably the biggest concern they have, they're all in it to take back our streets. They're all in it to do the right thing. They're all very frustrated that they don't have control of the factors that are contributing to the crime and the destabilization of neighborhoods. The good news was of the policing strategies we discussed that worked. Our crime-free housing program was the one and only of its type that was functioning at the level it is in the entire state of those police agencies represented at this summit. The other one, which I was rather surprised at but proud of, and proud of the university in regard to, was our co-policing relationship with the NIU police. Bar none, no one in this state, no police agency in a community hosting a major university has the level of cooperation, the partnership, and the co-policing hand-in-hand with one another that we do. I can't tell you how important it is. The community policing strategies combined with intelligence-driven policing were also successful models for crime reduction. Those are well underway here in our town, and they will be amped up over the course of this year. The chiefs did agree to reconvene to assess our crime trends this fall, early into the fall semester, and we hope to see what things we've learned, what things we can implement, and how things have changed. One thing that came out of interest in regard to community development, our community development director kind of helped inspire this, was we checked in regard to what other city departments could benefit by a summit of this nature, and community development was one. So what have we done? And we're almost done here, folks. From 2012 through 2015, our crime declined to its lowest level in a decade. In 2016, the wheels fell off. We accomplished what we accomplished because of you, because of the community, because of the collaboration with our community, in implementing a variety of community policing programs such as our resident officer program, our crime-free housing program, our community relations program, our 2020 Vision for the Future Plan Phase 1, and a variety of community engagement programs such as Camp Power. We also implemented several proactive policing strategies, and I can tell you more are coming this year, such as the domestic violence unit already in place, the targeted response unit already in place, our sex crimes registration and monitoring unit already in place, problem-oriented policing and intelligence-driven policing, as I stated, already in place. We also look at what we can do based on how we train our people. We utilize engaged training measures to enhance our relationship with the community through programs such as procedural justice, which teaches our officers how to listen and how to be fair and how to respect our community members, critical incident de-escalation, autism and behavioral disorder training, lethal force decision-making, cultural competency, crisis intervention, problem-solving, and the principles of community policing. What are we doing? We'll continue to strengthen our co-policing initiatives with the Northern Illinois University Police Department. And what we're doing is trying to reverse this trend of increasing crime and turn it again into decreasing crime. We've also partnered with our city attorney and our DeKalb County recently-elected state's attorney, Rick Amato, to develop proactive measures to hold juvenile offenders and their parents or guardians accountable. We have to take this step if we can't rely on others to take care of their own. We've joined forces with other law enforcement agencies to target specific crime problems impacting these trends. I'm not going to go into great detail on it, but one of them is involving the Safe Streets We are partnering with community-based agencies. You heard one here tonight, Safe Passage, the DeKalb County Juvenile Justice Council, which I'm a board member, and the DeKalb County Mental Health Task Force, which we are now actively engaged in pursuing a grant to address some of the policing issues involving the mentally ill in our community. We're deploying our 2020 Vision for the Future Phase 2 program. It will have 20 initiatives to be deployed within 20 months. Of the three that are so that I think can make the biggest difference are a safe parks program, a citywide neighborhood policing program. So you can have the expectation as alderpersons and as community members that we're coming to your ward, and we're going to sit down and host a meeting in your ward and ask you how you feel about your policing, how you feel about your neighborhood, what perceptions you have, what your fears are, and how you'd like to see that changed, and what we can do to help. Let me repeat that, what we can do to help. We need that partnership. We are deploying a juvenile delinquency risk reduction program in concert with District 428 and primarily through our school resource officers. That's going to be key for us. What we do with our juvenile offenders can decrease this trend dramatically in short order. What I have to say is, we can't sit back. We have to depend on our community partnerships to do the right thing, but we have to do the right thing and become more proactive. We're going to do that, and I'm going to tell you that the potential for next year to have a bigger increase in crime because of the arrests based on proactive police behavior or strategies is there. It's the same thing we experienced when I first came here. One bit of good news, the face of our police department and what we're doing to change to be more culturally representative of our community is what I think one of the things I'm most proud of at this point. When I first came here, we had one African-American police officer. We just hired our fifth. We now have four Hispanic police officers and six female officers. That's a dramatic change from where we were. We hope that trend continues. In closing, the DeKalb police are always going to strive to do the right thing for our community. You can take that to the bank. But I'm going to sit here for another couple of seconds or a couple of minutes and talk to you about how I feel about how important we grow this local economy. If we don't create opportunity in this city, and we sit back in our haunches and do nothing, this crime is not going away. Poverty and crime, regardless of your position or perspective on it, go hand-in-hand. We need to look at our leadership and our residents to stand up and take charge of that, along with your police department. We need to make this community a place where people want to live, want to go to school, or just want to visit, and I think we can do that. I'm very optimistic we can do it, but we got to start doing it. It's equally important that we address our public safety and quality of life concerns together. We both, on the leadership side and community side, got to get out of our silos. It's imperative that we're talking to one another and doing the right thing. This isn't all about a 25% fund balance. This isn't all about a specific problem in a certain neighborhood. This is about us working together to solve this problem. We can't divide the issues facing this city into silos. Every decision made from that dais, every position advocated by this community has repercussions or circumstances or outcomes. We need to be cognizant of that. I implore you to work together with us as partners, as you've done, and I thank you, leadership and community, for what you've done to have our backs in law enforcement. We appreciate what you've done, and we thank you for it and hope for it in the future. On behalf of the men and women of the DeKalb Police Department, we thank you for partnering with us, and we strive to make this a better place to live. And I'll take any questions you might have.
Questions of Chief Lowry, Alderwoman Norahiko.
Chief, thank you for your service, the service of your officers, your energy and dedication. I have one question. It's kind of a two-part question. What conversations, what ongoing dialogue do you have with both the Mental Health Board and Kishwaki Health System in terms of the mental health needs in the community?
I'm going to be real honest with you, Alderwoman. I don't see us having beds in this community for impatient mental health. I don't see that on the horizon. Now, I don't want to speak out of turn, but there are certainly some folks in this community that are here tonight that would probably know more about that than I, but I don't see that light at the end of the tunnel. What I do see is the potential for this grant that we're working on to help begin to give us a plan to address the immediate needs, especially public safety has to deal with between fire and police. It doesn't handle the big picture long-term. I do know that this week, Northwestern Hospital has just, Kish Hospital has announced the Living Room Program will be out of the Ben Gordon Center. And for those of you who aren't familiar with the Living Room Program, it's a program where people from, during the daytime, basically at 9:00 to 5:00, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, people who are in crisis but don't rise to the level of something terrible or needing police intervention can go meet with qualified professionals and discuss the issues that they're facing. Beyond that, we're still faced with taking all of our folks into the ER and doing mandatory evaluations or voluntary committals. The board, what I call the Mental Health Task Force for the county, is working hard to do the right thing. The 708 Board's working hard. But it's like everything else. It's all guided by funding. So it's a challenge. It's a significant challenge.
Thank you.
Other questions of chief?
Seeing none. Thank you, chief, for certainly your leadership of the department, but also I'd like to thank the community for those intersections of partnership that you speak quite favorably of, and I think it speaks well of the concern in this community and the dedication from the community side of the table as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Moving next to item mayoral appointments, I've got Bessie Krenopoulos wishing to speak to this item. Bessie?
That was quite a presentation from the chief. I don't, it almost seems like anything that I'm going to have to say at any point in time tonight is almost pointless. Thank you, chief. We've got to work together, you're right, for what it's worth, mayor and council. I'm glad to see that appointments are going to be made, and I hope that the Airport Advisory Board, along with all the other advisory boards, are going to be used continually in this city. But I do have a question, and it's probably the way it's set up through the municipal code due to more recent changes, but I have a little problem with people who are being appointed to this committee or commission who serve in entities. It's great that they want to be a part of this in one sense, but it seems to me, having folks from the county and from the Chamber of Commerce, you know, hold positions already, maybe it would be better to have them as liaisons instead of voting members. For some reason, it just doesn't seem to be the way advisory boards should function. And I also had a question. You couldn't tell from the backup, how many of the people who are being appointed, and there's quite a few who are being appointed, are actually residents of the city of DeKalb?
All four.
There are more than four that are being appointed?
The citizens being appointed, Bessie, are residents of DeKalb. The other organizations, I believe one of those three are, for certain. I'm not certain of their residency. It was the organization that we were wanting represented.
As voting members?
Yes.
I'm not sure that that's the right direction, but that's just my two cents.
Thank you, Bessie. Moving next to the motions, we have the appointment of Ryan James to the Airport Advisory Board for a two-year term through December 31, 2019. And let me ask, would you like these voted individually, or do you want them combined?
They can be combined.
Alderman Baker?
I find myself agree-
I find myself agreeing with former mayor Bessie and Hull. If they want to be a liaison, like we, do we have a council member right now that's a liaison to the Airport Advisory Board?
Not to the airport.
I used to be that person, so that would be something that we need someone on our council there. And I would say if they're, like Paul Borg, for instance, in the Chamber of Commerce, if they want a seat at the board to offer input but not voting. So I would like them voted individually to see if we have any type of agreement with that.
Thank you. Alderwoman Noriko.
You know, to the best of my knowledge, we've talked about these issues. We talked about the composition of the Airport Advisory Board. The time to deal with that issue was when we were, you know, voting on the composition of the Airport Advisory Board. And so I really object to rehashing material that we've already gone over. We'll never move ahead.
How many total members will the board be seated with? Nine or seven?
There are seven. There are seven members of the board.
So you're going to pick all seven of them right now, many for two- and four-year appointments?
We've staggered the appointments. I've staggered the appointments so that they're not all expiring at the same time. You see 2019, 2020, 2001 expirations.
I've been up here 16 years. I've been involved in politics since 1979 from behind the scenes. I've never seen a complete board picked, especially right before an election. I think it's something that should be put off till after the election, but for sure, the ones in question, I think we should postpone those.
Thank you.
But that's my opinion, and I think now is the time to talk about it. It is when we're going to vote.
Alderwoman, you indicated your preference was to combine the motion.
Yes, because, you know, for example, the executive director of DCEDC, it's, he's representative of that organization, as well as the Chamber of Commerce and the county administrator. And there was discussion that we wanted to have some of the other entities that participate in the benefits of the airport, serving on the airport board, you know, having some stake in that board.
Mayor, for the benefit of the community, could I provide some additional background? For those that are unaware, the city council had previously authorized, excuse me, an airport governance study. The city then undertook and hired Sixl Consulting, and they made a presentation, and part of that study was looking at the governance structure and how can we make the airport even more successful for the community. And in that study, one of the key things was to transition the current or previous Airport Advisory Board to one that had a more business, more businesses at the table. And one of the things that I know we noticed through the communication with Sixl is that there wasn't a direct connection right now between the city, specifically between the airport and the development community. And the development community is identified by the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation, that is responsible for marketing the community for industrial businesses, for the DeKalb Area Chamber of Commerce, which represents over 300 businesses in the community, as well as DeKalb County itself. And why is that important? Because if you look at the leadership role that DeKalb County has been taking specifically in relation to economic development, they're currently adopting or going through the comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Plan, or SEDs for short. So by transitioning and taking four, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but taking four long-term or many of the long-term members that had been on the Airport Advisory Board and merging them with the expertise of the business community, we would then be able to connect and be able to better market the community. One of the things that we discussed as we went through the study and learned firsthand, and I know Tom Cleveland, our airport manager, would attest to this, we've heard from some of the local businesses that we may not, they may not have chosen to locate here if we didn't have that airport. So with that information and knowing that to get those larger employers like we currently have with 3M and Target, how do we continue to market the airport so that we get more of those businesses? So just as a background for the community that may not be aware of that, that was the whole plan, because one of the struggles we have, as the council's aware, the airport is currently subsidized by the general fund. It's not self-sustaining, so we're trying to put some steps into place so that the airport does become self-sustaining. That's just the background.
I would as well, when the city council voted to approve the ordinance that reestablished the Airport Advisory Board, and I believe it was voted on at first and second reading over two meetings in November, and before that, in October, there'd been discussions about the Airport Advisory Boards, or the Airport Governance Study. The city code contemplates that the county administrator, the chair of the EDC, and the DeKalb County Chamber of Commerce Executive Director each have a position on the board. So as the ordinance of the council approved contemplates those three would be appointed to positions on the board, and the other four would be essentially at the selection of the mayor.
Thank you. Dean, help me with the description of combining these into one motion.
If that was the direction of council, someone could make an omnibus motion to approve the appointments as listed, or could make a motion to approve the appointments and could read each of the names and terms.
Okay. Alderman Baker?
Well, maybe a fair solution might be an offer of an amendment to shave one year off of the term. There are several two-year, there's three-year, and four-year appointments. Make them one, two, and three instead of two, three, and four, so that as the council changes over the next couple of years, that there'll be more opportunity for possibly some fresh appointments.
Okay.
Looking for a second?
It's been moved to shift the appointments, reducing the appointments by one year. Is there a second? Hearing none. Let me review the appointments that are being recommended, and then I'll entertain the omnibus motion to approve. Appointment of Ryan James to the Airport Advisory Board for a two-year term through December 31, 2019. Bernard Popino for a two-year term through December 2019. Paul Borick, Executive Director of DCEDC, three-year term through December 2020. Appointment of Matt Duffy, DeKalb Area Chamber of Commerce, through, a three-year term through December 2020. Appointment of County Administrator Gary Hanson for a three-year term through December 2020. Appointment of Robert Owens to a four-year term through December 31, 2021. Appointment of James Rhodes for a four-year term through December of 2021.
So moved.
It's been moved as an omnibus motion to approve the appointments as presented. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Fanouken. Thank you. Discussion, Alderman Baker?
A point of curiosity, because maybe it's already built in. Let's just say that there's a new mayor down the road, pick it two years from now, for instance. That new mayor comes in and feels it necessary to replace someone that still has one or two years left. What would be that process? Because I know how it's been done in the past, and then I'll tell you, but I'd like to know what the process going forward should be or will be.
There would be essentially three options available. Obviously, first, if it was the mayor's prerogative, they could speak with the individual or individuals in question and ask if they'd be willing to step down if they chose not to do so or declined that request. The mayor has the ability to remove any appointed member of a committee or commission and present reasons for that to the city council, and the city council can override that decision. And third, as with the current reconstruction of the Airport Advisory Board, if the city council elects to make a dramatic change in the structure of a board, they could eliminate it and recreate it, and that would create entirely new vacancies on the board.
Well, when I was removed was because I didn't support the consultant, and there was no discussion. So you're saying it was done incorrectly in the past, but that would be the future. And that would give reasons for legitimacy for a council to make a decision, and I'll rescind my position and go along happily with the direction now.
Further discussion? I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Marquart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. And thank you, council, for the support. Public participation. Barry Schrader, I'm assuming you wish to make a comment on an item not on the agenda?
That's great.
At this point, come to the podium, please.
Can I give it to the city clerk or give it to each council member?
The clerk will distribute them.
I know I only have three minutes, but I have 10 more minutes.
Barry Schrader, 511 Roberts Lane, DeKalb, Illinois. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and those in the audience. I've had a lot of concerns about the new fitness center that's being built adjacent to the YMCA on Bethany Road. The reports that we got when the public hearing was held that there'd be no impact on the community, that everybody was in lockstep approval of the plan for this $46 million, 111,000 square foot complex, which would be adjacent to the YMCA. When I found out, there was a report, that came out in 2013 from an outside consultant, that there would in fact be a tremendous impact on the YMCA and its finances. This is the impact. $292,000 the first year, if 5% of the members of the YMCA leave to go to the new fitness and health center. $584,000 lost if 10% would join, and of course, over $1 million lost of 20% over a period of either one, two, or three years ago to the new facility. The YMCA has been a member of our community for 59 years, has served a lot of people, families. They're now, they now have over 1,000 people in their low-income programs such as Camp Power, serving food to lunches to people under the poverty level all summer long, and recreational programs for those less fortunate who cannot afford membership in the Y. The first thing on the bottom of their budget to be cut, if they're hit with those kind of losses, will be all these charity programs. You can ask the executive director, Mark Spiegelhoff, and I don't think he's here tonight. This is something the board has not dealt with. They've been under some duress to approve this plan. That's up to them to explain how that happens. I'd like you to consider putting this on the agenda as an action item at the next meeting to ask that there be an impact fee imposed on the new fitness center to pay for the losses that the YMCA will suffer right next door when this opens in two years. And I've outlined the exact amounts in that impact fee in the handout I've given you, but I would appreciate it being an action item on the next agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barry. Moving next, we have the consent agenda before us in omnibus fashion. First is minutes of the Committee of the Hull, January 23, 2017. Regular city council, January 23, 17. Accounts payable and payroll through February 27, 2017, in the amount of $2,165,796.48. Ordinance 2017-7, amending Chapter 1, General Provision, Section 1.06, penalties. Resolution 2017-35, authorizing an agreement with Traffic Analysis and Design Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $36,000 for the purpose of providing traffic counts, data, and analysis in DeKalb urbanized area. And Resolution 2017-36, authorizing an extension of the agreement for services with SRF Consulting Group Incorporated for development of the DeKalb Region Transit Development Plan. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda before us? So moved. Moved by Alderman Marquart. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Noriko. Roll call.
Marquart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Then is there a motion to approve those items in the consent agenda? So moved. Moved by Alderman Fanouken. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Favor. Roll call.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Marquart?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Ordinance 2017-008, amending Chapter 38, intoxicating liquors, Section 38.25, hours for sale of alcohol. And this is before us in first reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderwoman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Marquart. I would note that the staff has studied this issue. The backup material is before us, and that study is based on a request that was received by myself as liquor commissioner. I'll turn to city attorney.
Yes, Mayor, as you indicated, the city received contact from one of our local liquor licensees, who is licensed as a grocery store. They advised essentially that their concern is that they are at a competitive disadvantage when compared to other grocery stores in neighboring communities such as Sycamore, and in particular that they have customers who indicate that based on their work schedules, they may shop at certain times of the day, and if they want to be able to buy a bottle of wine when they go grocery shopping, for example, that based on the hours permitted for sale in DeKalb, they would choose to shop in Sycamore so that they can make that purchase in one stop. The staff memo at page 2 outlines the current hours, which are essentially 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM on Sunday for grocery stores. In comparison, in Sycamore, the hours are 6:00 AM to 12:00 PM every day of the week. In DeKalb, for a packaged liquor store, the hours are 6:00 AM to 1:00 AM every day of the week, except for Thursday, Friday, Saturday. The proposed ordinance sits before you, contemplates the same hours for sale of alcoholic beverages at grocery stores as at packaged liquor stores. So it would make those hours the same across different stores selling packaged liquors in the city of DeKalb. We did reach out to liquor licensees to solicit feedback regarding this. We had positive feedback from a number of the grocery and drugstore licensees. We did have one packaged liquor store that advised that they didn't view the proposal favorably, that they didn't want to see a change in the hours of grocery or drugstores, but that was the full extent of the feedback that was received. So based on the business requests and a comparison of our current regulations to those of Sycamore, this change has been proposed to eliminate the competitive disadvantage.
Okay. Discussion, Alderman Snow?
I have had some discussions with the liquor store owners, and I think there's more than one liquor store that are concerned about this ordinance. I think there's a concern that there might be a competitive disadvantage with existing liquor stores. We've kind of been squeezing them out since we've been allowing grocery stores to sell alcohol. Initially, it was in a closed, small area, and then we said, well, you can expand your liquor displays throughout the store, and I think we all walk into grocery stores now and see liquor stacked all over the place. I think from the existing liquor store's concern is not all of them stay open to the maximum hours, because there isn't enough business. While the grocery store, they don't really have to hire more people. They can sell alcohol at 12 o'clock, midnight, or whatever, and they're not hiring new staff. So for the existing liquor stores to remain competitive, they're not going to probably have to extend their hours and hire another person, which increases their cost, and they're probably not going to get that much more business. And I don't know as though people need to be going out to buy liquor at 12 o'clock if that's their, it's probably not their first run, it's probably their second or third run to the liquor store. So I guess initially, without more discussion of this, I'm not really in favor of it.
Alderman Jacobson?
I heard almost the identical complaints from the liquor store owners, and I had four reach out to me. Obviously, in my ward, there's a couple of the more prominent college ones. Both of their owners reached out to me, and one of them said, you know, we are at a competitive disadvantage. If you are a grocery store, anyone can walk in your doors. You can sell convenience items, you can sell chips, you can sell juices, you can sell sodas, you could even sell cigarettes. At our place, only 21-year-olds can walk in the door, so we already have a limited market. Our market is shrinking with the college kids going away. So while the grocery stores already have these competitive advantages, that they are the liquor stores are feeling the pinch hard, and most of them are locally owned in our community. And they're seeing the big-box retailers that could come in and use their market share and use their national ties basically to use their alcohol as a loss leader to get people in the store. And it's pushing the margins out of the business, and I think we've seen that. We've had a couple liquor stores in our community already close. Again, to expand them out, if the argument is, yes, we should allow liquor to be sold as a convenience with groceries, how many normal people are going to the grocery store at one in the morning to go buy their groceries? I would imagine it's a limited market in DeKalb. So again, I would say that we're giving them the convenient hours to go with shopping. We're giving them the convenient hours if you want to co-market and go get some beer with a steak or get a bottle of wine with the dinner you're cooking tonight. They have that opportunity. To now give them full and unfettered access to the market, the same as liquor stores, it's going to put all your local businesses out of business, and I firmly believe that. And I think it's a slippery slope. Again, I think it's well-regulated now. I think we've already given a competitive advantage to them. I don't think expanding the hours makes sense at this point.
Other comments, discussion? Alderman Baker.
Wow, have things changed a lot in the last fifteen to twenty-five years. I look at mayor oil race right now that quite possibly that between all of them might be under sixty thousand, where not too many years ago was sixty thousand for a mayor. But back in those days, I think the liquor establishments were donating quite heavily, and they're not anymore. Why? Hey, Dave, I'm shocked. You always lecture on free market. And quality of life for our community is what I believe in considering first. And I can't tell you how many times I was at the grocery store, Schnucks, for instance. It's in my ward, that's why I like to go there, first choice, that I wanted to pick up packaged liquor and couldn't get it. It was outside the hours. I mean, it was right there, but no, they were limited in their hours. And it just makes no sense to not adjust and change with the times. And if Sycamore is offering it, then we should.
Alderman Noriko.
And I tend to agree that with, you know, the neighboring community offering broader hours, I mean, there's, you know, direct competition, and we should support the, you know, the store that, you know, has been, you know, a good citizen in DeKalb. I think that, you know, you know, some of the NIU students certainly, you know, if they want to get, you know, pizza, sandwiches, whatever, you know, at midnight, I mean, that would be, you know, hopefully, the local store would be the place that they would go for that. So I'm, I'm in support of, you know, changing the hours.
Other discussion? Alderman Jacobson.
To believe someone's going to get in their car from campus and drive all the way to Sycamore to go to a grocery store and pass the three or four liquor stores on the way just seems kind of ridiculous to me, especially when you're talking, again, limited savings, if not the same price for some of the things. Again, there may be a couple people right on the border of, of the line in the residential neighborhoods that may take that jaunt over, but they probably would have done that anyway or stopped at the liquor store over just inside of Sycamore. I would imagine on their way to that grocery store, knowing where the, how the geographics work. In terms of free market, again, I am a free market kind of guy, but when we've pushed the liquor licensing fees as high as we have, we have altered that market significantly as the government entity. And to try to claim that a three- or four-thousand-square-foot liquor store should compete head-to-head with a national twenty-five or thirty-thousand-square-foot retailer, even if the fees are slightly different between them, again, we've altered that market by our licensing. We've altered how those businesses can work. We've altered the fact that people under twenty-one, whether it's at our level, at the city, or the state, can't even enter a liquor store. You can't be eighteen years old and run up to the liquor store and buy chips. You can't be a twenty-year-old and say, hey, I want to stop in and grab a Coke. You can do that at the grocery store with, with no problem. And again, the fact that we, whether at the state or local level, we have interfered in that market to limit it, and there are some cases where it makes sense, of course, to try to claim free market should work just by letting everyone do it when we've already intervened, I think is unfair.
Alderman Baker.
This is fun. I'm going to go nuts when I can't be up here anymore to bring back the history. But you had me on everything, right up to the point of like, of course, if a college student wants to go get some beer, they're not going to pass an open liquor store on the way to Sycamore. That, that's a given. But what you're missing is my point. And I think it's the point that many of us should consider carefully, and that is the quality of life for all of our citizens. When you're out shopping for your groceries, doesn't it make more sense to pick up that liquor in anticipation of what you might need over the next week instead of waiting until you run out, you're drunk, and then somebody's got to go get the beer? I mean, it makes more sense to get it while you're gathering all your party chips and dips and, and everything else. I mean, that's, the only time I might be inconvenienced if it's in a situation like that or I'm out shopping for groceries. But when you mentioned that we've intervened, what, what does it cost for the initial fee and follow-up for a liquor store license? Is it like a Class A? It used to be ten thousand, and it was limited to just a handful at one point?
I don't have the license fees in front of me at the moment.
What we intervened was, we let the free market wild. We didn't limit it to just the two or three or four people that probably had to contribute heavily to the campaigns in the past, and we said, no limit. And that took a year or two of debate before you were even in this town. Gosh darn, it was back like twelve, fourteen. I've been up here long enough. There should be term limits, and they shouldn't be as long as I've had to be here. But honest to God, there was only a few before, and, and they got their way. And when we dropped the limits to the free market, saying if you want in, you have to pay the fee just like everybody else, that's enough regulation right there, in my opinion.
Okay. We have a motion before us to receive and file the ordinance on hours for sale of alcohol. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
No.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Marquardt?
Yes.
Snow?
No.
Ray?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Ordinance two thousand and seventeen dash zero zero nine, amending chapter twenty-three, Unified Development Ordinance Regarding Video Gaming. And this is before us in first reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderwoman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Favor. I'll turn to Dan Olson.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Proposed as an amendment to chapter twenty-three, the Unified Development Ordinance Regarding Video Gaming on first reading, the city has seen a pretty substantial increase over the last year or two in the number of video gaming facilities, and particularly, they have clustered in certain areas in the community. The city reviewed this last summer on a few occasions, looked at the ramifications, particularly video gaming when it's operated as the principal use in an operation. There was consensus by the council last summer during the meetings that the video gaming, when it's operating as accessory use within an existing licensed bar or another use that does allow video gaming, that they should not be further restricted by the city. But in regards to video gaming establishments that operate as principal use, the city needs to take a hard look at that, and there was concerns about that they would expand and overtake, you know, multi-tenant commercial buildings. They're very close in proximity to each other. And as a result of the discussions, the council passed a six-month moratorium last September that goes through March thirteenth, that put a moratorium on the issuance of any additional video gaming license till the city could take a analysis of this, do a study, and take a look and determine what desired changes that the city wants to do. And just to note, as of January, there were eighteen video gaming establishments in the city with seventy-six video gaming terminals. The Unified Development Ordinance does not reference video gaming establishments as a use. In the past, that has been, the term "bar" has been used in terms of allowing video gaming establishments. Bars are currently permitted use in the central business district, the general commercial district, and they are special use in the limited commercial or light commercial district. The Planning and Zoning Commission started their discussions on this matter at their January eleventh meeting, and they focused on three areas. One was creating a use, new use and definition for video gaming establishments when that is the primary use or principal use of this facility. Establishing with zoning districts, once you establish the use where it'd be permitted or special use or not allowed at all. And then additional limitations such as minimum separation requirements between those establishments. Public hearing notice was prepared, and a, based on the discussion by the Planning and Zoning Commission, they conducted a hearing and closed that on February fifteenth. There were some additional discussions the commission had regarding the definition for video gaming establishments, and they continued their discussions to their February twenty-second meeting, and I'll go over the discussions at that in a short time here. Looking at the specific amendments, the article three, the definitions, and those are outlined in the ordinance that was prepared. So for video gaming establishment, the definition is, covers that basically that the establishment, the video gaming takes a primary role in the operation as opposed to the, you know, serving of liquor and other beverages. And there's other criteria that's added to here in the definition. Looks at those, and I'll, that helps determine if the use is a primary use of the video gaming. One of them is a number of seats designated for the serving of food or beverages, thirty or less. We took a look at the floor plans of some of the existing video gaming operations in the city that operate as a principal use, and to see how they're laid out, the floor plan, the number of seats, et cetera. So thirty or less is one of the criteria. Also looked at the type of food establishment permit they have from the county health department. What we noted here is there's three categories. One is, category one is the highest level of restaurants in terms of the variety of food, the criteria in terms of the, how that's prepared, stored, cooled, et cetera, highest level. Those are the larger restaurants. And all the principal use video gaming establishments are either category two or three, which are the lower-level ones, the ones that don't have a lot of food preparation. Some of them have food that's prepared off-site and brought on to the property. So looking at that or any license that indicates that the food items are consumed on-site while they're prepared off-site, that's one of the criteria. Looking at the gross floor area, if the establishment is twenty-five-hundred square feet or less, again, we looked at the floor area, the floor plans of some of the permits that we've issued for these to come up with that. Most of these are, take up tenant spaces or not in freestanding buildings around the two-thousand, twenty-five-hundred square feet. Additional criteria is the floor plan, is a floor plan dedicated to mostly video gaming establishments compared to the food and beverage area. Also, the documentation submitted to the city in relation to the liquor license or the video gaming application, does that indicate that it's primarily used as a video gaming? So that's one of the criteria, too. Looking at the name of the facility, the signage, have their documents that would indicate that it's operated as a primary use? And does the facility share a name or ownership with another existing video gaming establishment in the state? Part of the definition, too, this, these provisions I just mentioned do not apply to the public entity, non-for-profit liquor license that the city issues. Those are covered the fraternal organization, so those are exempt from these regulations as long as they're operating as accessory use, the video gaming there. The other amendment we had was to article five. That's the section that discusses the various zoning districts. And the commission's recommendation was that in the general commercial district, video gaming establishments would still be a permitted use. In the light commercial, it'd be a special use, no change there. And then with the central business district, the commission felt that the video gaming establishment, when it's a primary use, would not be allowed in the central business district. Currently, it is a permitted use. They felt that the downtown area should reserve key spaces for unique shopping experiences for retailers, and not to have that video gaming as a primary use. Just note, anything that, the video gaming that operates as accessory use, such as at O'Leary's or a few others downtown, those would be, you know, not changed at all, so they can continue. But it's a primary use, video gaming establishments would not be prohibited, they would be prohibited in the central business district. The finals, one of the other sections was the article seven. Supplemental regulations were added regarding the separation requirements with these primary video gaming establishment operating as a primary use. In the analysis last summer, there was a look that was mapped in terms of these primary use video gaming establishments, and there was a very small stretch of Sycamore Road, about fifteen-hundred feet, that contained nearly twenty-three percent of all the video gaming businesses in the community. So the commission discussed at their meetings that there was, should be a separation requirement on these so they don't take over a whole area or multi-stripe commercial areas. So they felt the separation requirement was validated and was needed. So we researched a few other communities that did have some separation requirements on that and came up with a provision and determined that a minimum distance of five-hundred feet between buildings or tenant space or video gaming establishments was located most efficient, most fair, most easiest way to enforce these. So you have in your packet also the maps showing the video gaming that operate as principal sites on Sycamore Road. And there's three areas, and it shows a five-hundred-foot buffer around the existing primary principal use video gaming establishments. Kind of shows where future ones could or could not locate. So it gives you an idea where the five-hundred foot is, what that means to these certain areas on Sycamore Road. It should be noted that the existing ones would be determined to be non-conforming, and they can continue, certainly. And even the language does allow a change in ownership on those, and they still can continue. They don't, do not have to shut down, so. So only if they would expand or relocate or something, then they would have to fall within the regulations. Language is provided also. We have some, of course, planned development areas that are zone planned development on Sycamore Road. So in those cases, we would look for the former terms of bar or tavern. If those are in there as permitted use, then it'd be permitted, or if it's a special use or prohibited, they still would have to comply with the five-hundred-foot separation. Also, an amendment to article twelve, that's a parking and loading article, where we added the video gaming establishment use in a formula, which is one space for every two-hundred-and-fifty square feet of floor area. That's the same requirement as the commercial service facilities and retail that we have, so very common formula for other commercial uses there. Additional information that you have, the request of the Planning and Zoning Commission that we provided was a map showing all the current liquor license holders with the classifications that would allow video gaming. So that's in your packet also to give you an idea where they're located throughout the city. The ones with the X in the circle indicate those have existing video gaming licenses. The commission was also wanted to have some research, look at their adjoining communities, some of their basic regulations regarding video gaming. So with, looked at Sycamore, Cortland, Maple Park, Genoa, and Rochelle. So lists their basic, what they do allow in their community and the number of establishments and number of terminals they do have, and that comes from the Illinois Gaming Board. The commission, in their discussions on the public hearing on the fifteenth, and then they continue that to February twenty-second, had a, what's in your report here, list all the eight factors under the video gaming establishment definition. We added about four of them, fifteenth hearing, and the one on the twenty-second. There was a concern by the commission regarding which is number eight in your report there, that it was too vague. It reads, "Such other conditions which readily suggest or indicate that the establishment is intended or is being operated whose primary purpose is the operation of video gaming terminals for play by the public." They thought that was too general, too vague. So the commission, as part of their motion they made on the twenty-second, was to remove that. But they did feel the other seven criteria were strong and would cover, were good and strong and would help determine what the terms of video gaming establishments that operate as a primary use. Yeah, they, so that was unanimous vote. The commission did recommend approval with the number eight being removed. So that's what the ordinance reflects in your packet. So that's what the ordinance reflects in your packet. A couple notes, the UDO does require, when we do any amendments to Article VII or XII, that there's a two-thirds vote, super majority vote by the City Council needed. Again, the moratorium will expire on March 13th, that's the anticipated date of the second reading of the ordinance. A little note here about the financial impact, there was discussion last year that perhaps some of the revenues are kind of stagnating or going off, that we've kind of hit our peak in terms of the area of video gaming. So we took a look at the last available four months of video gaming revenues with DeKalb and Sycamore, and both communities show a kind of a stagnation, or even a slight decrease in the amount of revenues over the last four months that are available. So that's information that's, again, using, again, that's from the Illinois Gaming Board's website. So we'd recommend approval of the ordinance as recommended by the Commission, and note, they did remove that number eight, that general requirement at the end. So I'm certainly happy to answer any questions along with Joel Allen, or Attorney Frieders also had a lot of hand in doing some of the criteria there.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Alderman Snow.
Just clarification, it sounds like we're creating a kind of a separate license for these standalone gambling parlors, but say out on Sycamore Road where we, they are kind of bunched together, if a regular restaurant, bar, full-fledged restaurant wanted to open up out on Sycamore Road next to one of these gambling parlors, and wanted to have four or five machines, they could do that, that, they would not be subject to this distance requirement?
Right, as long as it's accessory to the restaurant or bar operation, and they didn't meet the criteria for the primary use.
I have more comments, but I'll wait till for the question.
Yeah, if it's accessory, they would not be falling under the setback requirement or buffer.
Alderman Finuchen.
Dan, you noticed that, or you mentioned that the trend of the revenues were trending downwards. Were you able to separate the for-profit business from the not-for-profits for that? Because we heard earlier that the not-for-profit revenues were dropping off, and I'm wondering if that was driving this downward trend or not.
The information through the State and Illinois Gaming Board just provided the general revenues, it does not break it down between non-for-profit or for-profit.
Thank you.
Alderman Baker.
Well, I'm very happy that we took a pause and hit the pause button, and I'm thoroughly convinced that everything that you brought forward will be acceptable to all, including myself, with one exception that I've not shared with the Council. I'm not sure I shared it with anyone, but I had a discussion with Bob Goring last fall, and they originally did not come forward and add the gaming machines for Andy's or potentially McCabe's, because they really thought that it wasn't going to go over, and it was just one of those fads that would fizzle out immediately. By not coming in and applying in time, what they did was they locked themselves out of what they thought they didn't need, and now they realize they absolutely would have to have it if they wanted to reopen McCabe's, or maybe even do something with Andy's, because the downtown district is kind of an island by itself, and if you go down there for a cocktail at one of the establishments, they all have them but Andy's or McCabe's. And we're kind of, or I'm under the belief that McCabe's is sitting empty, waiting for an investor to come along to say, okay, I'm going to do this. And we would need to make an exception, I believe, only for that particular establishment, however we made that exception, like somebody that's had their license for 10 years or more, or, and/or is in the downtown business district. I think that would, that would make it for that one. But without letting them have the opportunity of adding these machines, it is their belief and my belief that we're going to see that, the doors closed there forever.
If they come in as accessory use, and for the video game is not the principal use, then they would be allowed to come in.
So they, so they don't need an exception?
No.
I thought I understood that you had to have food and all that others.
If they had a full restaurant, they can do.
Yeah.
But they have room for a full restaurant. Full bar, they would be possible.
If I can address that briefly, Mayor. A restaurant, or even a facility that has a restaurant and bar license, is not permitted to have video gaming terminals under the liquor code. A bar is. So if it's an establishment like the facility we're talking about that has a bar liquor license, they would be allowed to have video gaming terminals accessory to that license. The only restriction would be if somebody sought to come into the Central Business District and put in just a video gaming facility that's modeled after some of the ones that have come through City Council that have generated a concern. But a McCabe's that sought to have their existing bar supplemented with video gaming terminals, that would not be restricted by this regulation.
But, okay, and then I, thank you for clarifying. I did tell them to wait until about now, because we had put this moratorium. So anticipating March 13th that everybody approves as presented, then they could apply after that.
That's correct. To Alderman Finuchen's earlier point, if the Council's interested in distinction between different establishments, we can access a different report from the state that provides us revenue by establishment, so we could track that by establishment or by type of establishment. It's a far greater level of detail than was included in the backup, but if that's helpful to the Council at some point, please let us know.
Thank you.
All right, I got it, thanks.
Alderman Larreco.
Are you aware of any video gaming establishments that might have been interested or were interested during this moratorium period? In other words, is anyone knocking on the door?
I, I don't think we've had too many inquiries. There may have been one out, Joel Allen probably has some more background on that, early on in the moratorium period.
Actually, just recently, we had, just recently, we had an inquiry from somebody that wants to ask the Council for an amendment to their annexation agreement at the Chinook Center. Right now, I believe there was a limitation on the issuance of any liquor licenses at that facility, so changing that would require an amendment to the annexation agreement, and their intent was to open a video gaming standalone store.
Alderman Jacobs.
Just to clarify, I think obviously that one of the big concerns of Council was that staying in the same strip mall, there wouldn't be two or three of these operated together. I just worry we're creating a loophole where effectively you could open a rest, or a bar in one unit, and an accessory use in the unit right next door, and effectively serve the food between them, thus giving yourself 10 machines. Do we have any protection against that, as it's currently written now?
Take it to Dave.
I'm trying to think of how that would work in terms of the different licenses establishments would need. If the bar was truly being operated as a freestanding bar and didn't meet the criteria that are outlined in this, then the 500-foot setback would not apply. I would note that it would be challenging to configure an establishment in such a fashion that you wouldn't be running afoul of those factors if you were trying to essentially configure it as a video gaming establishment. Separately, the city has the review of the premises for any liquor license application, whether it be for a bar, or for someone that's trying to seek video gaming establishment status. And in that premises review, I mean, among the security aspects, we're looking at our access to the site and how they control access, and if there were common facilities, or shared entryways, or doors, or pathways between the two, I think we would view that as a concern, and would bring that to the Council as a component of any license or consideration. So I think that would tend to come up in the, when someone's coming in and seeking their liquor license, as a factor we would identify for the Council in your evaluation of whether a license should be issued at all.
Again, the way I would envision it would be similar to the old Molly's and Bottle Store, where they'd be standalone, side-by-side businesses. Molly's would be an operating bar, and again, it's not, not picking on them, but just as that concept. But the bar would be operated as a bar, and then if they decided next door, hey, we have this unit next door, and we don't want to either have another business or anything, we can cooper- cooperate, basically, with very limited staff, why not just turn it into a gaming cafe? Again, and that could be in a strip mall situation, that could be in, in a, out on Sycamore Road, if somebody really wanted to come in and throw another one in one of these buildings right next door, they could probably pull it off. And I don't think that's what we, I think we're intentionally trying to limit that. So I don't know if there's a one word or one sentence limitation we can put in there, or give ourselves some room going forward. Then again, if it's coming to the Council in order to be expeditious and business-friendly, when there wasn't any regulation, we were approving them without really any roadblocks. The question is, is it a quick, easy fix that we could do before second read, or before we do it, that we can close that loophole effectively?
So I think the, the critical distinction between the way Molly's was operating at that point in time, and what we're talking about, City Code has for many years allowed bars to also have packaged liquor sales, and one establishment is a part of one liquor license, and that's how, you know, for example, Sullivan's operates under that model as well. The liquor licenses we're talking about would be for two separate entities. Under both City Code and under the State Video Gaming Act, you're limited to no more than five licenses per establishment. If somebody is trying to cooperate, as you said, two establishments as one facility, I believe they'd run afoul both of the City Code and of the State Code. If it truly is two unrelated businesses, and one happens to be a bar that has video gaming terminals, and one happens to be a video gaming establishment, the 500-foot setback would not apply in that circumstance, and they could be located in close proximity. But I think it would be very difficult for someone to craft a situation where they'd be running two businesses next door as one common establishment. We certainly can take a look at that before this comes back to City Council on second reading.
Alderman Snow.
Well, I just kind of, I wanted to add some more comments, I guess I'm philosophically opposed to more standalone gambling establishments. I guess I realize there isn't an entertainment value to them, but they really don't produce anything. They just take money out of the community. And we have quite a few machines in DeKalb, and so I'm not trying to eliminate them. But yeah, I am concerned that these places really are only gambling casinos. Yeah, they have a liquor license, but if the rumors I hear are true, they order alcohol from a liquor distributor at one time, and for the next two years, they order no more alcohol. So either they're running afoul of the state liquor law, and not buying their alcohol from a distributor, they're going to a local grocery store, or they're not serving alcohol. So, you know, I would be in favor of kind of continuing our moratorium, because I really don't think we need more standalone gambling parlors.
Alderman Baker.
I agree with Alderman Snow. I, I would, I would agree to extend it, but in, in regards to as what's been presented, I have a question about the parking, and I don't know the parking regulations, so I don't know what the difference between commercial parking or retail parking, like per seat, per table, is, how is that different than a restaurant? Because I'm wanting to make sure that we're not reducing the number of parking spaces that are going to be required for a 30, a 30-seat establishment.
I'll have to take a look at the parking, I don't know offhand.
So the parking restrictions would depend on the zoning district in which it's located? So VGEs obviously aren't allowed in the Central Business District, but there's not a parking requirement there. For other areas of the community, this change wouldn't result in a different parking standard for a video gaming establishment as compared to a bar, or as compared to a restaurant. The parking formulas are all based on the same factors. We would just have to look at a given district and see, is it a permitted use, and what is the standard in that district?
Okay. In, just to, the reason I was thinking about it is, I'm thinking about like a retail establishment, you said 250 square feet, 2,500 square foot for the unit, we're talking 10 parking spaces, but a restaurant would need more than 10 parking spaces, so.
And some of these primary principal use are, are not functioning as a restaurant, they're functioning more as the video gaming, so.
Right.
The parking requirement is more.
So then I'll add, so the second question I was going to ask was, like we have, I think we have different annual fees for licensure of different bars, whether it's a full bar or a bar and restaurant, did we consider looking at additional tier of licensing for a strictly primary use gambling establishment, as opposed to keeping the licensure the same?
We didn't look at the licensing structure with, with this. It's primarily focused on the zoning and the land use and the associated setbacks.
To Alderman Snow's point, you know, we would like to see development of, you know, things that would bring in retail, or would bring in, you know, the dining tax, and so we're potentially going to be losing some of that through licensing additional gambling establishments in DeKalb.
Alderman Baker. I'm sorry.
If I can just very briefly, previous City Council discussions have focused heavily on not adding additional classifications to the liquor code, because the city went from a very classification-dense code to a more streamlined code. And as, as we looked at the concerns that have been raised by the community and the Council, they all tended to focus around the use, the detriment, or perceived detriment from co-locating a number of uses of this nature, the signage, the traffic, the characteristics of use, more than really the licensed characteristics. So we haven't evaluated that further. As we started the process, our first discussions were, should we look at liquor code, or should we look at Unified Development Ordinance? And given that we were looking predominantly at those use characteristics, it seemed like it was more appropriate for a zoning-type restriction. If the Council wanted to look at both of those, we certainly could look at either creating a different classification, or indicating in the liquor code that if you're applying for a bar license, and you're identified under the UDO as a video gaming establishment, or predominant video gaming establishment, that there's a supplemental fee. So if that is a direction of the Council, again, we're happy to accommodate that and bring back further revisions.
Alderman Baker.
The example that Alderman Jacobson used of Molly's and the Bottle Store, I think dates back to before you were here, Dean. His example is perfect. The old store, which was where the CVS is, it was part of it, it had two licenses, or one license, I.
I believe it operated under one.
Did it ever have two, Mike? No, okay, that was correct. But it could have, simply to get around the rules here, paid another $10,000, and boom, they're in business automatically if we're not careful. But maybe we shouldn't worry about that. The thing that wasn't added in that, that I brought up at one of the meetings, was that the state currently limits five to an establishment, but certainly if the demand was there, and the state decided to up that to 10, do we ever want, because we have home rule, we can decide this, and now might be the time, do we ever want to allow more than five to be by right if the state were to raise it to 10? And that's the only thing I'd like for the Council to consider before the final reading, as well as Tony and Bob, maybe you can come up with an idea on this moratorium, without running into what we were concerned about before, is that we have to approve everyone through Council, what would be the criteria if there was a moratorium? But yet, if you come forward with one, how do we decide without being accused of some sort of discrimination or unfairness, and deciding whether they get it or not get it, if we don't go by a set of rules? So if there's going to be some sort of a short-term moratorium to this, there has to be some logic, because I don't want it to go on forever.
Alderman Markward.
Thanks to the Planning Commission, everybody for their work on this. It establishes what a video gaming establishment is. My question comes into play is with, okay, you have this use part now, and now we come to the licensing part. So, because in my mind, they go hand-in-hand, because previously they were bars, and in my mind, they were always bars, and as an accessory use, they had video gaming parts. That's the way they were licensed, that's the way they were approved. So now, if we're going to go the other way, are we going to require a video gaming establishment to have a liquor license? Or can they have, I mean, just serve pop and snacking, you know, a lot more caffeine so that people keep putting in money, because let's face it, after you drink so much, you don't bet as much sometimes.
I believe under the Illinois Video Gaming Act, they're already required by state law to have a liquor license, so I'm not certain that.
Okay, so we're kind of in the same boat, then, basically. Okay, so we're kind of in the same boat then, basically. To me, it's the same thing. I don't, other than we're changing the name of the thing, of the establishment. Am I missing?
We're distinguishing between when it's a primary use and when it's accessory.
And is it an accessory?
Are you suggesting that we just allow no more primary use only to establish more, should we say, reason for being? That might be palatable because maybe that's really what we do want, is more economic development and larger venues and restaurants and full service.
That's what I think everybody is trying to say.
Well, then just say it, make an amendment, you might get the support.
That they don't want it to be the primary use, but.
So if that's the council's direction, I think the most effective way of implementing that would be looking at both the liquor code and the UDO. So adopt the changes to the UDO that define video gaming establishment and then also separately look at the liquor code and say, we're now recognizing this class of use exists in the UDO and there's a limit on the number of licenses that the city will issue for that liquor license. I think implementing a numeric limit on the number of establishments in the UDO would be relatively unorthodox and given the greater discretion the city has with regard to liquor regulation, using both codes together would be an effective way of meeting that need if that's the council's direction.
Okay. I've got a citizen wishing to speak to this issue. Let me turn to Steve Capitan.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve Capitan, Third Ward. Just a real quick parenthetical to Alderman Jacobson. If you applied the $500, 500-foot limit to proximity to bars, that would solve your When the council approved video gambling several years ago, it was sold to the community as video poker, intended to be supplemental income for bars and restaurants. But with the technological changes in the gambling industry, these machines are for all intents and purposes slot machines and are promoted as such. As you know, strip mall casinos started popping up in the main commercial corridor. These establishments obviously intended gambling as the primary purpose of the business. Since there's a limit of five machines per establishment, one owner opened two similar establishments in order to meet the requirements. What is before you tonight is an amendment to limit the proximity of these strip mall casinos to each other. Perhaps I missed it, but did the council consider, discuss, deliberate the impact on revenue for other entertainment options? It's already been discussed that there is a leveling off here. There doesn't seem to, doesn't even, this doesn't even take into account the highly addictive nature of slot machines, much more than poker. What about the potential impact on family dysfunction and crime? Has that been discussed? Has the council considered eliminating strip mall casinos entirely? Alderman Snow and Alderman Favor mentioned that, but has that been a part of your deliberations? If not, why not? I urge the members of, the mayor and the members of the council to visit a strip mall casino that operate as early as 9:00 AM. Might be a good time to go to see what it looks like. I don't think there's much entertainment at that hour, more addiction. And consider stronger limitations on gambling in the city of DeKalb. Make no mistake, these strip mall casinos don't bring entertainment dollars into the city. They only draw dollars from other entertainment within the city, no free lunch. Finally, a final question. Has staff been directed to use only the word gaming and avoid the word gambling? It's not a rhetorical question. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Other discussion from council at this point? We have Alderman Favor.
I, like Alderman Baker's suggestion of potentially putting in some limiting verbiage into the ordinance that if the state were to open up the number of terminals that are allowed within a business, then we would already have written into our ordinance that there would be limiting the number of terminals, maybe to five, but so that if they were to increase that, that we would not be subject to. Go ahead.
If that's the direction of the council, again, I think that would be a restriction that would more closely fit with the existing regulations on video gaming in the liquor code. So there's a section in the liquor code on video gaming terminals and video gaming licenses. And it has restrictions on who can have them and where they can be located and so on. Be very easy to build a numeric limit on the number of terminals or a numeric limit on the number of freestanding video gaming establishments into the liquor code.
So before us is the UDO change. Dean, do we need, Dan mentioned the two-thirds supermajority. Is that needed on receive and file?
It's needed on an amendment to the UDO. So ultimately to pass the amendment, it would require a two-thirds supermajority vote. The code is not specific on receive and file, but technically since passage doesn't occur until your second vote on it, it likely would not be required on first reading.
With that, is there further discussion from council? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
No.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finnucan?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
No.
Noriko?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Alderman Baker.
I just hope that Alderman Favor and Alderman Snow come forward with their amendments because the second reading is the one that counts. Thank you.
And if there are any other council comments on the liquor code, we'd be happy to hear them and bring back any direction.
Yep. Moving next to ordinance 2017-10, amending Chapter 24 Building Code Article All Contractor Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Markwart. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderwoman Noriko. Let me turn to Joella Charlton.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I am accompanied tonight by Don Whitmore, the Chair of the Building Code Board of Appeals, to present the recommendation of that group from their February 1st meeting. At that meeting, they recommended a proposed amendment to the building code which replaces the existing testing, licensing, and bonding requirements for electrical and mechanical contractors with a registration, which includes insurance requirements and a reduced fee structure, and also modifies newly enacted registration requirements for general contractors by eliminating the bonding requirement and requiring the same insurance and fees as the electrical and mechanical contractors. This is quite a bit different than what was recommended at your meeting, the last meeting in January. As you will recall, their prior recommendation, which became effective on February 1st, recommended that electrical and mechanical licensing be continued as it has been in the past for the city under the prior code, using updated tests for each discipline. They also had added the requirement that general contractors be registered as part of their recommendation. At that time, when we were discussing those amendments with you, staff had come up with a couple of additional items that we felt would be necessary to make that code more clear and suggested that we would go ahead and ask you to approve the recommended changes to the code, get those in and effective as of February 1st, and come back to you at this time after they had a chance to meet on February 1st and provide those additional clarifying remarks. At that February 1st meeting, however, the discussion kind of went in a different direction and I want to go over with you some of the reasonings that they had for making their recommendation. They're all outlined in the staff report and I'm going to separate them into a different, a couple of different categories. So first of all, as I mentioned, the Building Code Board of Appeals recommended changing the licensing requirement for mechanical and electrical contractors and instead calling them registration. So I want to talk about that first. The state of Illinois licenses certain types of contractors, namely roofing contractors, private alarm contractors, fire sprinkler contractors, and plumbers. And when those contractors come to the city to request a building permit, they need to provide proof of that license to the city staff in order to get their permit. Unlike those who are required to get licenses, mechanical and electrical contractors do not need or do not have state licensing requirements. So for many years in the past, those types of contractors would achieve their licensing requirements from municipalities. In the past, that was a common technique and if municipalities didn't have the testing requirements available to the contractors at that municipality, many of them could provide proof that they had licensing in other communities. One of the other things that the BCA, BCBA noted with regard to licensing when they were talking about the reasons for change is that one member of a firm, so if you're coming in and getting licensed, the principal or somebody in charge of the firm could come in and take the task and become licensed and that person would then be responsible for overseeing all of the work of their employees. So the person taking the test might not actually be the person doing the work. And so that was a concern that the Building Code Board of Appeals discussed. They also discussed that the test that's given for these contractors is an open book test and summarized that it really didn't test the knowledge of the individual as much as it did their ability to take a test and kind of find the answers about where codes are within the book. They also further noted that municipality, many municipalities have discontinued this type of licensing, mostly due to the issues of giving the test and some of the other things that are, that make it difficult to move forward with that requirement. So ultimately, the board voted to remove the licensing requirement for mechanical and electrical contractors and instead require them to become registered. So you get the name, the address, important information about the firm, but there's no testing of those individuals that oversee the work that happens within the community. Moving on to a discussion of surety bonds. Under our prior code, prior to February 1, those mechanical and electrical contractors would need to have or provide surety bonds in the amount of $10,000 to ensure or secure the work that they do. With the thought being is if they don't complete their work in compliance with the code, you could call that bond and help a homeowner secure some of the additional changes that would be required to complete the work. The bonds usually cost less than $100 and again, provide that assurance to the city and the construction workers. During their meeting, the board considered possible cases or scenarios where this could happen and came up with some counterarguments to why they should not be required. First, they reasoned that if a surety bond is not required by the city, the city would not be involved in the financial aspects of resolving any problem between a contractor and a private property owner. So they reasoned that the city should not be involved in those private disputes. And they also discussed that the city building inspectors, as part of their review, would be identifying any deficiencies in the work and suggested that surety bonds were kind of over and above anything that would be necessary. And I think most importantly, one of the things they acknowledged was that to their knowledge, there have been no cases where it's been necessary to call any of the mechanical or electrical contractors surety bonds. So for those reasons I just stated, they recommended removing surety bond requirements for mechanical and electrical contractors, which we've done even prior to the recent approval. And they also recommend removing that from the registration of the general contractors, which was a new requirement that they had recommended to begin on February 1st. So getting to that general contractor registration requirement, that was a new thing. Prior to February 1, the city did not register or license general contractors. And as part of their February 1 recommendation, they had suggested that would be a good idea and at that point also thought it was following along with the mechanical and electrical contractors, a good idea to also require the surety bond and the insurance requirements. Again, the Building Code Board of Appeals had a substantial discussion about this item and ultimately voted to eliminate the licensing, or I'm sorry, they voted to keep the registration requirement because they did feel it was equally as important to have that contact information, but for the reasons that they made for eliminating the surety bond requirement for mechanical and electrical also suggested that that be eliminated for the general contractors as well. Moving on to fees. If you subscribe to the fact that licensing requires additional staff time, it makes sense that our fees for first-time electrical and mechanical contractors where we're issuing a test and going through that process, we had a higher fee of $250 for first-time license acquirers and then that fee dropped to $50 if you were getting a renewal on that fee and not having to go through the test. The Building Code Board of Appeals evaluated that fee structure and as part of their recommendation, felt it was appropriate to reduce the fee for registrations, now because we're not doing the licensing and the testing, to $50 for first-time registration holders and $25. So again, it went from $250 to 50 and then from 50 to 25 for the second, secondary or repeat registration holders. Although they made that recommendation, I just want to point out that the information and the code that you have before you tonight does recommend, include the recommendations of the Building Code Board of Appeals with the exception of those fee requirements. As we were preparing this document for consideration by the council, the finance department flagged that as a potential fiscal impact on the budgets that have already been approved for the department and had initially asked that we pull the item from the agenda to give them an opportunity to review that recommendation more carefully so we could report to you what that impact on our budget would be. However, again, keeping in mind that the prior code that you adopted on February 1st has been implemented, so we are currently testing people, we are requiring licenses, we are requiring the higher fees at this point. So knowing that and their recommendation, we're in this situation now where we're moving forward and every day that we go through, we're having additional people that are either going through the process and going ahead and getting the testing and paying the higher fees, or in some cases, those people are holding off on getting their permit. So we didn't want to pull the whole item altogether. If the council agrees with their recommendation, we're suggesting that you move forward with their recommendation to make these modifications, but that staff would come back with a review and analysis for the council's consideration if any further adjustments are to be made for the fees. I do want to point out, it's not in your backup material, Brenda Hart, our building permit counter administrator, did receive two emails late in the day. One is from a person named Todd Hans, H-A-N-S, who is an electrical contractor and he seems to be in support of continuing to file the licensing requirements and I can provide you a copy with that email. Also included is a letter from Glenn Nimmerfroh, N-I-M-E-R-F-R-O-H, of Hero Heating. He also is, seems to be supporting the continued licensing requirement for mechanical and electrical contractors. As I mentioned before, Don Whitmore is here in the audience to provide any additional insight. As I indicated, the ordinance that's before you tonight includes their recommendation minus the fees. That original recommendation went to the DeKalb County Builders Association and the letter that you have in your packet from Ken Anderson is made assuming that the entire recommendation would be forwarded and considered by you tonight, which includes the fee reduction. So I don't know if you have any additional comments, Don?
Don Whitmore, Chairman of the Building Code Board of Appeals. Joelle gave a very good synopsis of our meeting discussing this issue. I urge you to pass this change. The Building Board of Appeals adopted this change unanimously, and the letter of endorsement from Ken Anderson of the DeKalb County Building and Development Association is based on the content of what we did, which is the fees as we discussed them. If there are a change in the fees later, the Building Board of Appeals would like to be involved. Any questions?
At this point, Don, just for clarity, the Building Board of Appeals recommendation is supporting the ordinance as we have it in front of us with the $50 fee, correct?
That's what's in the agenda. Correct.
The ordinance you have before you does not include the fee reduction recommended by the Building Code Board of Appeals.
We had a corrected ordinance on the DIAS this evening, and that has registration requiring a payment of $50 for initial application. On page 2 of 9 of that.
I know that was a subsequent ordinance that was presented. I know when we talked about changing this on Thursday of last week, the recommendation was that we leave the $250 initial fee the same and the $50 secondary fee the same, in lieu of the 50 and 25 fee recommended by the Building Code Board of Appeals.
Discussion. Questions from council? Alderman, Noriko.
As a consumer, if there is no testing or registration for mechanical or electrical, how do I have any kind of assurance when, you know, I call someone in the phone book who says they're an electrical contractor? How do I know that they are what they say they are, that they have any, you know, knowledge base?
I'd like to point out that recently, this year, there hasn't been any testing done by the building department for quite a long length of time, because there wasn't anybody qualified to administer the test. So...
So I'm no worse off now than I would have been.
Then the Building Board of Appeals, when they looked at this, there's only one person in a company that has to have passed the test. So whoever the company sends out there, their qualifications are based on their experience and training, and that doesn't necessarily mean that they're qualified relative to the test. They probably didn't take it.
Mr. Whitmore's point, the Building Board of Appeals focused on that issue extensively, that if you own an electrical contractor company with 15 employees, it might just be one person at the company that has taken the test and passed it, and that causes them to be a licensed electrical contractor. If they send out any of the other 14 employees that are working in the city. I think another issue that Mr. Whitmore and the board focused on heavily was, in the history of, if there's a registration or license or a testing requirement, it kind of implies that if somebody did substandard work, that there would be some sort of disciplinary proceeding, or that there would be a purpose to it, that it would guarantee some level of quality. And we were unable to find the record of the city having ever really, ever revoked, ever taken any kind of disciplinary action, ever called upon a surety bond. There were individuals who had failed the test but would retake it and pass the test, and thereafter be registered. So the Building Board of Appeals focused pretty heavily on not really finding a great deal of consumer protection in the regulations as they existed.
Other discussion or questions? Alderman.
Yeah, Don, since the ordinance was not included in the online packet, and the only ordinance that we've seen is what's on the table tonight, is that what we're voting on, and that includes the $50 and $25, not the larger amounts that were mentioned?
Yes, the ordinance that was circulated on the DIAS, I think Alderman is correct to reference this, 15 and 25.
So this is the ordinance in front of us, not any other number, correct?
That's correct. So if that was the change to the staff recommendations outlined by the community development director, we would need to amend that.
Is there a desire from council to make that amendment?
To make the amendment, to do what?
To leave the fee at $250, or to set the fee at $250.
No. I say 50 and 25, and be done with it.
Then I'd like to make the motion that we receive and file, the ordinance as put before us this evening.
Do we have a motion already? Mark Ward moved, and Noriko seconded. I'll call the question, then. Roll call.
Are we voting on what was in the stapled packet, then? This is the one that we were picking?
Yeah, with the fee at 25 and 50.
Okay.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finnoukin?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Are you still of the mind to ask for a waiver of second reading?
I think our interest in asking for the waiver of second reading was to continue to allow the registration as recommended, but give us time to evaluate the fee. So if you've decided on the fee without input from the finance director on how it impacts the budget, then I would say go ahead and act on second reading.
Let it come back to us, that second reading, or to waive.
I would suggest waiving.
Okay. Alderman.
Yeah, I guess I'd want to know the financial impacts. Well, I'm comfortable waiting for second reading until the next meeting. I think that's a, regardless of how we want to go, it's an important piece of information.
Alderman Baker.
How many per year fees do you expect that you're going to be collecting? How many do you think will register?
I think we haven't done a complete or thorough analysis, but we believe the impact on the budget is somewhere between $10,000 and $20,000 a year difference.
Mayor, I would just respectfully request that the council, I mean, our goal was to make sure that this item went forward because of the whole testing issue, but the finance department has not had an opportunity to review the financial impact, and I respectfully request, give the finance director the opportunity to present that to you. Don't hold up the ability to move the rest of the ordinance forward, so if you want to waive second reading or approve it tonight, please do so, but please give the finance department at least the ability to analyze it and report it back to you so you have all the information in your decision.
Alderman, Jacobson.
I mean, I guess my question is, other than net new revenue, that we're not collecting anything from now, it's, rather than going to a licensing, we're really going to a registration process, much like we did with rental housing, it's all net new revenue. So again, I appreciate when there was testing and when there was costs to this, it would be a burden, but if it's merely a registration...
That's not correct, because isn't there a fee now?
Mechanical and electrical do pay a fee now, and the fee they pay now is $250 for new and $50 for renew, and those are being reduced to 50 and 25 respectively.
So is anyone... Alderman Baker.
Well, if I caught what was being presented, a contractor could have multiple electricians working for him, and he only needed that one $250 fee.
That is correct.
So I ask the same question, and if you don't have it tonight, you don't. How many electricians are going to get licensed? We can figure the numbers in three seconds, if we have the total number of people.
I think that's the analysis that needs to be done.
Correct.
Thank you.
So how are you going to do that? Contact each, is there something on their form...
We'll look at historical.
...that will show how many people are working under each one? Or do you have to call them all and ask them?
I would suggest we look at the historical trends of those that registered for new licenses and re-registrations every year, and provide some analysis based on that trend.
The ordinance isn't suggesting a fee other than one person per firm, correct?
That's correct.
So it's no different.
There is a source of new revenue, however, it's not tremendous. General contractors have to become registered now, whereas before, they only did if they did work that was on a city right away.
Okay. Okay. Is anyone of a mind to waive second reading?
Explain to me why we're not going to pick up all the electricians within each company. Because, I mean, does an apprentice get to work out there still underneath the one license?
Well, the same would be true for mechanical contractors. I mean, there are different levels of, you know, expertise among electricians and mechanical and people, and to perhaps expect them to know the full gamut of what you might give them on a test is not necessarily fair. I mean, some of them might be experts in refrigeration, and other ones expert in fans.
Well, I'm sure it got debated. I'm going to give you an example that I talked to an electrician about, which is what I'm concerned about here, is that many licensed electricians, maybe union especially, that work, say, in Chicago, but live out here, maybe their specialty is just pulling wire. Maybe the thing that they work on is just attaching those wires to fuses. I mean, there are many, like you described, many facets to each trade, but if they want to do a weekend business out here, I want to know that even though they may work for a company that can do business in DeKalb, that they actually know the whole gambit, and I want everyone that's working as an individual or on the job, that in the case where Kay mentioned, how do I know? I mean, there needs to be one more level to this somehow. I don't have the answer, but do you understand what I'm trying to ask?
I think the Building Code Board of Appeals considered that argument, and the comment from some of the specialty contractors that were there was, you may have someone who has spent their whole career, the requirement is a combination of hours plus the ability to pass an open book test. And that somebody spends their whole career pulling wire through conduit, or their whole career hanging tin, doesn't necessarily, that they have a ton of hours doesn't necessarily mean that they'd be qualified to design and balance an HVAC system or wire a residential house. The fact that they could pass an open book test and find the right sections that have a given reference, I think that was not viewed by the Building Code Board of Appeals as being indicative of quality. They felt that the existing test simply didn't meet that standard unless there wasn't a reason to maintain it.
Again, I guess I understand everything you just explained, and what I'm trying to say is that if somebody wants to do work, and, okay, maybe it's covered then. I suppose if they're working on their own, and they say, hey, I work for this big company in Chicago, I know how to do it, well then, how does the consumer know to say, where is your DeKalb license that at least passed the open book test so that I don't have to hire a real electrician that with full experience to come in and redo everything when I have this inspected and it's all wrong? Because that has been a concern of mine for 20, 30 years. It's hard for the person in the public to know that the person that they're hiring really does know the code, even though they pull a permit and they say everything will be to code, and get all done, and you have to hire somebody else to come in and redo it. It's a very common problem.
The registration does require, for an individual who's going to have a business that's, say, an electrical contractor, they do have to furnish evidence of commercial liability coverage to the limits of $100,000 and $300,000. So there are some basic insurance requirements that are coupled with the registration. So if they're not there, you know, then you've got a fellow with a magnetic sign and a pickup truck. I mean, it's, you know, the person has to be in business.
Hey, I mean, it's easy to get fooled if you're a consumer. So I guess my question is, is it an education process? Will it be a registration process where the city's website maybe is attached to everyone and is up current with their licenses? Has anything like this been debated, or...
The city does maintain a list of those who are currently licensed with the city, but this change would eliminate the licensure. So we could certainly list those who are registered, but registration is not indicative of quality or ability, and the Building Code Board of Appeals felt that even the licensure was not necessarily indicative of quality or ability.
I'm going to ask again, is anyone of a mind to suggest we waive second reading this evening?
Oh, I don't want to waive it. Let's hopefully these things be answered.
I'm hearing none, so we're going to move on. This has been received and filed.
And when does this go into effect, then? It's March 1, correct?
This would not take effect until after it comes back to council and gets voted on second reading.
Even though we've already passed one that already has taken effect?
Yeah, that stays in effect.
That stays.
What's out there is...
And when that created a March 1 deadline, correct?
No, the existing code doesn't have an end date in it, no.
I understand that, but we added several levels into the last code that didn't exist for GCs and other things. When did that go start, go into effect effectively?
February 1.
So if we had someone that came to seek to do work, we have the ability to test them, we have the expertise to do that, and we have a test available, and we also certainly, we've been having open conversations with contractors, so they understand that these requirements are being reviewed by the Building Code Board of Appeals and the city council right now. We would continue that process until the council makes a final decision at your next meeting.
I'll move on then. Next on tonight's agenda is ordinance 2017-11, approving a rezoning from Central Business District to Plan Development Commercial, and approving a development agreement with Cornerstone DeKalb LLC for property located on the southeast corner of First Street and Lincoln Highway. This is before council on first reading to receive and file. Waiver of second reading and passage of ordinance 2017-11 is requested, and based on the timeline of the contingency period in the various contracts for the purpose of acquiring all five parcels at issue. Let me, by way of introduction, give my reflections on this project for council and the public. As we will hear from staff, this project has been in discussion and development since October 2016. I would characterize this project as transformational to the downtown neighborhood, the Central Business District. Since this project has been introduced to the public, there have been other business owners expressing interest in their further investing in downtown. The city has worked very hard to accommodate and support this opportunity for meaningful investment in the downtown. In fact, if approved and constructed, this is likely the largest private investment to the downtown we have seen in decades. We will be asked to consider the rezoning and development agreement this evening. The amount of credit in the forgiveness of this incentive can be set to just the city's portion of tax revenue generated. portion of tax revenue generated as the development agreement now reads, or to recognize crediting the revenue generated from all taxing districts from de equalized assessed valuation increase. Council could instruct staff to draft the agreement to credit all taxing districts revenue. Could I have a motion and a second to then enter discussion on this project? Is there a motion to receive and file ordinance 2017-11?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman, Alderwoman Noreco, seconded by Alderman Fenukan. Let us then move to staff's presentation on this ordinance. I'll turn to Joellen Charlton.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Staff is pleased to be presenting the cornerstone project for the council's consideration tonight. In the past 30 days since this project went public with the public notices published in the newspaper, staff has completed more analysis and listened to and had more conversations about this project from a variety of people than I have on any other project since I've been here that have been forwarded through the Planning and Zoning Commission process. We've talked about autos and its history and why it's no longer a viable building for the community. We've talked about Mediterranean's challenges in being a building located next to that building and some of the challenges it has had with trying to remain profitable and functional. We talked about relocating a long-term business, the bagel facility, and incorporating that into this project. Building design details have all been worked out. We've talked about the marketability of one-bedroom, fully furnished units and the impact on the community, and the fiscal impacts of this development on the city and on other taxing bodies, as the mayor alluded. Thoroughly gone through parking, both short-term and long-term parking and everything in between. We did look at garbage facilities that are provided for the site. And then finally, we've spent the last couple of weeks working pretty extensively on the actual development agreement that is attached and part of your packet tonight. And yes, I do want to state that the staff did begin discussions with the developer about this development in this area late last year in September and October, a few months before it went public. These are pre-application discussions, and they are necessarily private between city staff and the developer because discussing these plans may have jeopardized the developer's ability to secure some of the adjoining properties. And I want to tell you why. When we first started talking to Mr. Pappas about his development, his initial plans only included a development on the autos property itself. But because of the issues that the Mediterranean building had, we quickly learned that anything we do on autos to demolish that building could very easily cause destruction or demolition needs on the Mediterranean building. So, I put it in the staff report. I just wanted to reiterate that beginning in September and October, this project started with a reconstruction on the autos. And over time, it grew to include the Mediterranean building, the glitter building, and the Barb City Bagel building to the rear of this property. And to this point now, we have a much better and more comprehensive project than it could have been realized if we were only dealing on the autos property. The project's pace that it's being brought to you is mostly based on the developer's need to secure approvals prior to March. Keep in mind, he had contracts on four different buildings, on five different PIN numbers, and he was able to secure them, not all with the very same details in each of the agreements. And one of those agreements, the longest contract he could receive, was set to expire in March, and that was the Mediterranean building. Also, it was thought to be consistent with everything staff had been hearing from the community and the elected officials with regard to removing or minimizing barriers to development in an effort to be business-friendly. An extensive project overview, including information on the development and the financial incentive that's provided to the council on January 13th. It included a significant amount of details on the fiscal impacts of the project, both on the city and on the other taxing bodies, as well as some general information about the impact that additional bodies would have on businesses and restaurants in the downtown. Jason is here with us tonight, and he was a big part of developing those studies. So, if there's anything that needs reiterated from those studies, he can be available to answer those questions. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted the public hearing on this case at their meeting on January 15th and subsequently rendered a unanimous recommendation to approve the rezoning that's before you tonight. The attached ordinance approves that rezoning from Central Business District to the Plan Development Commercial zoning classification and approves a development agreement with the developer. In making its decision, the Planning and Zoning Commission considered recommendations from four other planning documents, which all recommend development that is consistent with the developer's plans. In addition to the comprehensive plan, the Planning and Zoning Commission looked at the 2007 Downtown Revitalization Plan, the 2011 Design Guidelines for the Downtown, and the 2013 Decalb City Center Plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission did not consider financial incentive information as that, that is not part of what their purview allows. And so, there was no discussion or inclusion of those facts that led into their recommendation. I do want to talk about those here tonight. As indicated that the last council meeting, this request incorporates a $3 million financial incentive request to construct a seven and a half to eight million dollar project. That $3 million of that project cost does represent 40%, but one of the things that we did talk about quite extensively is that a million, or there's a pretty significant amount of that first million to million and a half dollars that represents property acquisition, remediation, and demolition. And if you'll recall Dean's conversation about the autos property at your last council meeting, there was significant discussion about how some of those costs were going to be required by the city anyway. So, if you remove that one to one and a half million dollars as a percentage of total cost, it really does come a little bit closer to that 25% number that is a policy in the incentive guidelines from the past. I do want to talk a little bit about the financial incentive requirement. We did have an independent financial consultant evaluate that $3 million request, and he did conclude that it was a reasonable request. Separate from that objective financial review, the advisor also suggested that from a policy perspective, it may not be advisable to set arbitrary limits on the amount of funding considered. Rather, he suggested that the city council may wish to consider what it takes to make that project happen. What do we need to jumpstart development in our downtown? As I will discuss a little bit more later, the development agreement contemplates forgiveness of the incentive based upon the generation of revenues paid back to the city in keeping with past development agreements. So, from the city's perspective, that would include the incremental values received in the first years until the TIP district expires, the property tax revenues generated from that point forward, and any sales tax revenue also generated from the project's non-residential component in the development. I did want to note, again, this kind of gets to the financial advisor's comments. When you're incentivizing a project like Cornerstone, which are to have beneficial impacts to all taxing bodies, this project isn't just benefiting the city. Jason's analysis of the fiscal impacts did show quite extensively that all of the other taxing bodies were going to benefit. And they're going to benefit whether Mr. Pappas owns this project or whether an investor purchases this building. An investor's only going to purchase this if they know they're also going to make money. So, we see that as a win-win moving forward. One of the things that the mayor mentioned is that because we have formulated the agreement to only count the city's contribution, one of the things you could do in any amending motion is to accept or acknowledge that all of the property tax revenue that is generated to the other districts could also be counted towards that repayment commitment. So, instead of the 25 to 30-year term, just counting the city's contribution, it would go closer to a 10-year term if we were looking at all of the impacts to all of the taxing districts. The development agreement was attached, and that's what made your packet very long. It's an over 68-page document that approves the concept plans, requires the submittal and approval of final planning documents that are in substantial compliance with those approved concept plans, and contemplates many of the other developmental requirements that we normally go through when we're looking at final development plans. As part of our process, we got together with the developer and his attorney and our staff and our attorney, and we went through that document page by page to make sure everybody understood what those requirements meant and what the city was asking for and that the developer would agree to those requirements. I'm not going to go through all of them because there's a lot, but I do want to hit on a couple of points that I think are important. I already mentioned the zoning going to Plan Development Commercial, and it's authorizing exactly what we've looked at before. 51 units of one-bedroom, fully furnished apartments on the upper levels with commercial units on the first floor. The agreement does specify some of those minimum requirements that we talked about, the amenities that they're going to be providing in the building. And it also lists specific permitted and prohibited first-floor commercial uses with a focus on retail and restaurant type of uses that we've heard about from the developer. The city, another point is that the city intends to enjoy a full range of security and site access provisions that have been incorporated into other similar documents. And this would include things like allowing access to onsite security cameras for use by our police department and other public safety programs. The site would also be fully compliant with our crime-free housing program. As we have discussed in the past, the building that houses Barb City Bagels is anticipated to be demolished and converted into a parking area. Again, parking is not required in the downtown, but the developer saw this as an important fact, and we heard from the community that it's also an important fact. At the time of final plan approval, the developer and the city will agree on language relating to the use of these new parking spaces. So, one of the things we heard from the public was, wouldn't it be better if some of the spaces closer to the building could be utilized for public? So, the developer and the city are agreeing to work mutually to come up with a coordinated plan for parking in the short term that would accomplish both the city and the developer's goals. So, we don't know what that will look like yet, but I think it's fair to say that he is willing to work with us on some of the concerns that were raised by the community. And then on the long-term goal, which is something we've already talked about, the developer has indicated his willingness to deed the property to the city at some point in the future that parking does become a really defined problem, and we wish to pursue any parking structure or parking deck on that property. Some of the details on the financials, the agreement contemplates that $3 million incentive in two phases. The first phase is a million and a half dollars in phase one would essentially pay for the acquisition, remediation, and demolition of the property. And in that phase, the city would essentially act as a lender and would pay eligible cost of acquisition and demolition as it is incurred. In exchange, the city's position would be secured by a promissory note and corporate undertaking, and a recorded first mortgage with appropriate title insurance would be obtained. We would pay out on that only after we've received appropriate documentation and lien waivers or other related information. So, what that means is, if for any reason the developer failed to develop the project, the city would be able to foreclose on our first lien holder position and acquire the property in a developable state. From that point moving forward, the developer would achieve his final approval plans, and we would convert that to our position as a lien holder. And we would move forward to phase one, I'm sorry. At the time of final plan approval, the city would transition to phase two, and the city's first liens would be subordinated to the developer's construction financing. And then at that point, he would continue the construction of the main building and complete that construction, and those remaining million and a half dollars would not be acquired or submitted to the developer unless and until the project is completed and the certificate of occupancy is obtained. Another point is that the project anticipates the relocation of at least one tenant in the 122 South First Street building. So, the agreement indicates that the demolition of that structure is not required until the new building is completed and occupied, and they're moving forward on that project. The development incentive also would be repaid or forgiven over time. I've mentioned this before. The agreement before you has that stipulated such that it would be repaid over time with the city's revenues generated over the long term. But again, if you wish to change that, you could make that in the form of a motion to amend the existing ordinance as presented. Because the city would be holding the one and a half million dollar phase-two incentive during the construction of the project, the city would be permitting the developer to pledge an owner's surety in lieu of requiring separate posting of performance bond. So, we're going to hold that in lieu of having a separate surety bond. Also, we did look at all of the impact fees that are applicable to this project. School impact fees, as required by the city's codes, don't kick in until you have two-bedroom apartments, so there will be no school impact fee. The sanitary and park district fees are applicable, and the developer is being encouraged to talk to each one of those entities separately and would be, will be determining the applicability of those fees, if any, moving forward. That kind of completes that high-level overview of the proposed development agreement. There are a lot of additional points in there that I'm happy to answer any questions. I do also want to indicate that as part of the financial incentive, we fielded a few questions from people about how do we track that? When do we see how well the developer is keeping up with their pledge to produce these reports? And so, the question is, are you going to do an annual report? I don't think we've done them in the past, but certainly moving forward, if the council wishes, it's a good idea. It's easy enough to incorporate into a schedule in maybe June, May, June, July, somewhere in the middle of the year after we've received the property tax information from the county. The only thing that we'll have to be a little bit careful of is that sales tax information from the state is protected. So, if our report in any way identifies the sales tax revenues of any one business, which would be proprietary, we wouldn't be able to do that. So, if that's, if we feel that's a risk, we could tell you whether they're on target or not on target, or, you know, we can come up with some way to provide an annual report for the community. Staff does recommend approval of the ordinance and the development agreement that you have before you. And again, given the anticipated end of the developer's due diligence period prior to the next council meeting, it is being recommended that the council approve on first reading and waive the second reading for this project. I think I've covered it all. So, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Before turning to council discussion, I have a number of individuals wishing to speak to this issue. Joellen, thank you for the overview at this point. And let me turn to those registered to comment. Dwayne Brown?
I think the question here is not can we afford this, but can we afford not to approve this? The seven and a half million dollar cornerstone redevelopment project has cleared its first hurdle. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved the request to rezon from a Central Business District to a Plan Development Commercial District. Parking was a major topic at the Planning and Zoning Meeting. Parking has always been a problem in downtown Decalb and probably will remain so until the city decides to build a parking garage or increase the size of its parking lots. There is parking within one or two blocks or certainly within three blocks from the project. Look at the parking in Chicago's Loop, where it costs $6.50 an hour on the street or an average of $34 a day to park for a few hours in the parking garage per day. The lobby consulting group submitted its findings to the city. It stated, "After evaluating the submitted pro forma, it is the consultant's findings that the given risk, $3 million, is a very reasonable request from the developer. The developer plans to construct a four-story building with commercial businesses on the first floor and upscale $1,000 apartment, a month apartments on the upper three floors. These are fully furnished with availability to bar and grill and maid service. This would be a niche market segment and not compete with other landlords. The building is designed where the floors have a slight gap between each apartments to reduce vibration, and the material on each apartment walls is..." to reduce vibration, and the material on each apartment walls is different so as to form, reduce noise. The building would have a guest room for meeting and entertaining friends, complete with TV and other amenities. This would be modern but still blend in with the existing buildings. It won't be the pink Cadillac in the parking lot. Unlike the steam learning center, which would produce no sales tax and little property taxes, or the Egyptian theater that would require the city ownership and cost millions of dollars to implement, this project would be both a property tax and sales tax provider. It would be an economic generator for the downtown and city. Within a three-block radius of this project are restaurants, bars, convenience stores, banks, convention facilities, pharmacy, and antique shops and businesses which could all benefit. I understand Alderman Jacobson's concerns. It alone may not be the redevelopment factor for the downtown, the whole downtown. I understand our former mayor's concern for longer vetting process and to have this proposal reviewed by the Financial Advisory Committee and the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation. Unfortunately, the due diligence period for these properties expires in early March. We simply don't have the time that would be required for them."
Dean, I'm going to ask you to wrap up, please.
Okay. This project meets all the TIF requirements. It could produce over a 30-year period of between three and four times the city's $3 billion investment. I have considered many of the different scenarios, and I have, the question in my mind is, in three years, will we say this was a big mistake, or will we say this was one of the best decisions the city ever made? Unlike out-of-town and/or out-of-state developers who show us artist renderings of projects, Mr. Pappas has finished projects such as the Fargo Inn and the Elwood Steakhouse, among others, that we can see. I know there are risks with a project of this size, and I understand that. However, I believe the upside potential is greater than the downside risk. I support this project, and I ask the council to support it. This could be the shot of adrenaline the anemic downtown needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Dwayne. Jim Hovis?
I live at 329, I'm used to, 611 Linden Place, DeKalb, Illinois, and I own the red sandstone building that's a kitty corner from John Pappas Development and across from Walgreens and the Town Clock. I was a active, very active in city affairs 20 years ago when I fought to save downtown historic buildings. We worked to save the entire block of North First Street, the grass lawns. I wanted to preserve those for the communities. At that time, I saved seven or eight, seven or eight buildings from being demolished that I thought had good historic value. I come here today to say, tear down autos. It's not of that historic value. And what John Pappas is proposing putting up is magnificent. It fits the characteristics of downtown and the other buildings. It has the, it's brick and stone, has limestone on the outside, it's not pretend, pretend brick. It's not something made something just to look good. I think the comparison to the other buildings, they were put up 140 years ago, some of them, 1877, that's 140 years. They're still there. And look how they were built, two-by-four construction. He's putting in two-by-six construction on all the walls. They're strong. He's putting R-50 insulation on the roof, R-38 insulation on the walls. Compare that to factory buildings. I bought one that has R-6, and I brought it up to R-36. He's putting in R-50 on the roof, R-36. He's putting in soundproofing on the outer walls. The windows are ultraviolet protection, above state standards. Installation is above state standards. Everything he, John Pappas does that I have seen in these other towns, like Dwayne said, was quality construction. So, parking. I think we've got to look at this for the 30, not the 30-year benefit. I think this isn't a 140-year building. This can be a 200-year building. He's putting a Duralast rubber membrane on the roof of this thing. It reflects 95% of the light that hits it. It's recyclable. After 25 years, you roll it up, recycle it, roll down another one. And it's the best roof you can buy. It costs like, I put one at South Seventh Street, Duralast, cost me twice, about twice as much to put that as a different type of roof. He's going total quality. So I think you want to look at this for the 200-year return, and here it's only a 30 is what you're spending, or 10 years, depending on more taxing bodies. And the parking, parking issue, it's a short-term thing. We want, it'll prosper, downtown will prosper, the city will probably put in the parking garage, and beyond that, technology and driving is changing. You can now jump in a car and go to the other end of town for $5.80. And we know that self-driving cars are coming. Who is going to be driving a car in 20 or 30 years? I think it'll end. You get on your cellphone, if you have one, then, or you tap your hand, a car will be at the curb, you get in it, and it takes you to where you've already planned you're going. I bet in 30 years, we're not driving, and yet this is a 200-year project. Parking problems, I think, will go away. So I want to encourage you all. I think that it's a tremendous investment. I think that $3 million is cheap. He's bunking down $8 million, getting only $3 million back, and he's taking all the risks. Whatever he does in his demolition, he's going to pay the extra as this keeps going. So he's limiting the city liability. So I urge you to vote yes, so he doesn't meet tonight and waive second reading, so that he doesn't miss a chance on the options that he's exercising now. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Bessie, Colonel Apple.
Too hard acts to follow over there on that one. Over the last several months, I've gained a lot of respect for Mr. Brown and his ability to contribute, some very good input to the mayor and council. And of course, I've known Jim for many, many years, and we fought a few battles in the past. Yes. And certainly, they make some compelling arguments for this, but still, for me, it's the speed. And it's not 30 days that this has been vetted here. It's only 15 days. The council only got this at their last meeting, and then it went to plan commission. So it's been a very short period of time. Had it been for, you know, over a 30-day period, maybe some of these concerns that some people have about the 40% versus the 25%, and the vetting by the Finance Advisory Committee, which by the way, should have met already this past month, but hasn't, maybe if some of that vetting had been allowed to happen, there would be a more of a level of comfort. We're not utilizing our boards and commissions to their fullest degree. And more directly in regards to the financing is, when is the benefit going to be realized for the taxpayers? During what period of time? And I just found out today, I didn't realize that there would be no school impact fees. Not a good thing. And the mayor did mention, and I would hopefully maybe get an answer to this question in your discussion that preceded the beginning of this item. You mentioned that there were, that this was in discussions for quite some time, even though they weren't all in public. But you also did mention, Mayor, if I heard correctly, that there were other investments that were sparked as a result of this. Could you elaborate on that? That would be interesting for us to know. Thank you.
Those other investments are private conversations, such as Director Charlton alluded to.
Back to the private, okay. Thank you.
Steve Capitan.
We're drawing on a little history here. Bessie was on the council, and I was one of the fighters with Jim to save the old post office and not use tax dollars to incentivize the demolition of an historic building. Mr. Pappas has made a quality proposal that would be a substantial asset to revitalizing the downtown. His other investments in the city of DeKalb have been quality developments and contributed to the growth of the city. But when the council considers a proposal that greatly exceeds the city's policy on the maximum percentage of the project, greater scrutiny should be given to other elements of the agreement. Specifically, I believe that a prorated clawback provision be included if the development is sold for a profit above and beyond a reasonable rate of return and before the city has recouped its investments. When I was on the council, clawbacks were a normal part of incentive agreements, even when they were within the guidelines. I urge the council to amend the agreement to include such a clawback provision and direct the staff to work with Mr. Pappas on language and return at the next meeting for final passage, a special meeting if necessary to meet deadlines, the deadlines mentioned. It's hard for me to believe that deadlines could not be extended for a couple of weeks. If the real estate market is so hot that it couldn't be extended, then that would call into question the need for such a large percentage incentive. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Dean Goodenow, and I apologize if I mispronounced the last name. Correct me.
My name is Dean Goodenough. I am, I am with Duff Properties. 137 East Lincoln Highway is one of our projects. It's on the north side of Lincoln, just a little bit east of the property in question. On the surface, you would think that this is a direct competition, and it is. But this is good competition. This is what the downtown needs. From experience, one-bedroom apartments are the most demanded apartments in the DeKalb area. I should have said, Duff Properties has numerous properties around the downtown area. One-bedroom, small apartments, efficient, low-cost, energy-efficient, that's what the people are looking for. So this is an excellent, an excellent benefit to the entire city, and I encourage it to move rapidly. The parking issue, I consider it a non-issue. My experience with our buildings and our tenants, when we have a one-bedroom, probably 30 to 35% do not even own a car. Only about 20 to 25% own two cars when they're in a one-bedroom. Therefore, I don't consider that an issue. The square footage, people are demanding the smaller apartments. And as far as the impact fees, if it's a one-bedroom, why would they need to pay a school impact fee? So I don't agree with that part. I would not agree with that being added in. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Katie Stoddard?
Thank you for letting me speak, but I have to tell you, I feel like Bessie and I are the bad kids on the block. I'm not for this at all, and I mean no disrespect to Mr. Pappas. I, in fact, it's almost like meeting God, because I've never seen your face, but I've known you for, known of you for many years. However, I really question this project because we need to be looking at where we are right now. And I am all for growth, but I also think that we need to look at the timing and the reality of this. And the reality is, this is not the right time. I feel like we're putting the caboose before the engine, and we're putting the horse behind the cart. And we need to consider many different aspects in this, and some of them include our mentality that has really failed, which is, build it and they will come. Some prime examples of this are the Convo Center, that is totally underutilized. Our new high school did not bring people here to live here. New Hall, Residence Hall for NIU, we thought that if we built that, we'd have students come. Then we have these different businesses that come in and out because they can't afford to stay. Downtown is one thing, but I really question, why are we putting so much emphasis on downtown? We brought the skating rink, that was a complete failure. We lost money on that, and that was based on lies, just to get people to go downtown. So I look at downtown like, this isn't the time to be revitalizing anything. We've been trying time and again. Renewed DeKalb has been working on this for almost a decade or maybe even longer. Where are we with this project? I don't see us going anywhere. And in fact, I would rather see Mr. Pappas put money into Route 23, where we have all of these empty businesses that have never even, some of them have never even been occupied. We have people from, businesses from out of town that are raising rents. The latest one that I'm aware of is Radio Shack, who had to go out because they tried to salvage staying here but could not afford the increase in rent. They don't make enough money to cover it. And then we also have to look at NIU and enrollment, as well as Kishawaki College and enrollment. Enrollment is down. So this really is not the time, because when enrollment is down in this city, we all know that everyone is impacted negatively. In fact, so badly that I'm sure Popeyes was in shock over the Christmas break when the kids were gone, because there really wasn't a whole lot of people there. So those are some of the things that we need to be considering. We have way too many rental units that are empty, too many houses that are going up for sale that no one is buying, people are not moving here. So when we talk about people coming out here from the city or from the suburbs to live here, it is affordable for them, but you just go east or west of here, and we are not affordable to them. Then you have people like me who live here, who have been here for a very long time, and I'm struggling to get by. And so there's a lot of people that can barely even afford to stay here. Property taxes are way too high. For what? We don't really have a whole lot to show for it, yet we still try to be like Naperville. Why? I don't know. We still try to be like St. Charles, and we want to be like Geneva. We are never going to be them. I don't see us ever being them. It's no different than NIU wanting to be a research institution, we're not going to be. And so I feel like we need to be focusing on what we are doing well at and stop trying to be like everyone else. Let's look at some of these corporations, such as Target Warehouse, 3M, who don't pay, they keep getting, you know, abatements. We have Realtors, we have people paying property taxes they cannot afford. And then to top that off, we have a lack of jobs.
Katie, you're approaching four minutes. I'd ask you to wrap up, please.
Well, I do also want to just say this, that we need to be looking at this entire issue, because parking is going to be an issue for over a year. If this project is not done right away, I don't know where people are going to park. I do feel that we need to be looking at, how can we better DeKalb? Downtown is not the place to go. I think, and I really, I feel like this, if he wants to spend his money, let him spend his money. But I'm not so sure that the taxpayers should be paying for it. And like, taxes are too high anyway. We're forcing people out, so instead of bringing them in. By the way, one other thing, the pink Cadillac comment, it was uncalled for, but thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Katie. Discussion from council. Alderman Snow?
You know, in talking about the costs and the demolition costs and things, first of all, nobody, once the property's built, if it were ever sold, nobody's going to look at the demolition cost to decide what to pay for the building. Your cost to construct a building, your cost to tear down the existing buildings have nothing to do with the value of the building. Once the building is built, it's the return on the investment. What will that building bring on a return? So if Mr. Pappas and his investment group is able to turn around and sell it, great, but he's not going to get reimbursed by a buyer for the demolition cost. I mean, they're not even going to look at that. Let's look at the scenario of if he turns around and sells the property. If he sells it for a property, what does that mean? It means the project was a success. He's been able to rent the apartments, he's been able to fill the first-floor business things. If somebody buys the property, that means somebody else has been, is now willing to invest six or $7 million or whatever the price tag would be in DeKalb. You've got a new investment of six, $7 million. Mr. Pappas and his investment group now has six or $7 million, whatever that is, available for investment. And a developer's not going to put that money in a bank and earn one-tenth of 1%. They're looking for their next project. If I know most developers are looking for the next project, and I think there's been an indication there's more projects in DeKalb that could be done. So by having a new buyer, you've now doubled your investment. Rather than a $6 million investment, $7 million investment, you now have a $13, $14 million investment downtown, because the next project gets moved on to. The equalized assessed value for that property, it's not going to be assessed at what it's built for. The assessor's going to come in and look at the property and say, okay, based upon rental values and business property, there's an indication that this property would probably be assessed at about 3.6, maybe 4 million, maybe if you're lucky, 4.5 million. But... But once it's sold, now the equalized assessed valuation goes to the new sale price. So once that property is sold, now all the taxing districts are going to even get more money. You've increased the assessed valuation, you've increased the taxes given to those things. We know the building's going to come down. It's going to come down in short order, because it's falling down. The roof is collapsing. So do you want another vacant lot in DeKalb? We've got a couple vacant lots right over here. Nobody's made an offer to buy them in how many years? Where the DeKalb Bank was, where Skorber's was, empty lot on the corner of Seventh Street, city has a vacant lot on North Seventh. There are other vacant lots, and nobody's been putting in offers for them. I see no reason to delay this project. The last time, you know, DeKalb has delayed projects, and we've lost out because of it. I remember where Hy-Vee is now, one time Kmart was going to move in there, and they did. They wanted to annex the DeKalb. DeKalb dragged their feet, Kmart went to Sycamore, and next to Sycamore. We lost that property. There was an outlet mall that was going to move to DeKalb. City dragged its feet. That outlet mall is now by Aurora. So yes, if you delay this project, it may go away. Yes, the building owners may look and say, gee, I can add now fifty thousand dollars to my price, hundred thousand dollars, because they know the city wants that building built. So I think it's be silly, foolish, cost, it would cost us more money for delaying the project. I think the sooner that building is torn down and rebuilt, the better. We do want to improve the downtown, and I think this project will do that, so I fully support it.
Bob, let me ask, are you willing to amend the development agreement to reflect all property taxes received by all affected taxpaying authorities?
I was considering that. I'd like to hear comments from the rest of you today, especially before I make any amendment.
Other discussion, comments? Alderman Jacobs.
That frustrates me, and I was prepared to vote yes for this tonight, but when Alderman make comments that are so factually untrue to reality, they have to be called out for it. When you sell a building, the EAV does not go up. Sales and taxes do not chase sales. And if you have a question about that, you can call your assessor, and he'll let you know that that's the case. Just because a property sells does not mean the property is reassessed, whether it's a higher or lower value. So to factually state that that's the case is incorrect. To say if it's sold, it means success, is also a misnomer. Again, under this scenario, the developer, and again, I made it philosophical about the issue of public financing, not about this specific project, because again, I'm prepared to vote yes on it tonight. If it sells for a loss, the city loses its investment in terms of the actual cash dollars that were generated. The investor can actually build it and sell it for a loss and still make a million-plus dollars on this project because of the level of financing. So just because it sells doesn't mean it was a great success for us. To claim it will be, I think, again, is jumping ahead of ourselves. When we talk that we want things to sell because those people will put the money back in the community, we've had an owner come into our town, and again, it's not this developer, and I'm not trying to make it about this project, but we've had an owner come into town that's bought a hundred-and-fifty million-plus in property, or made offers at least in that range in the last two years. None of those owners or developers have turned around and put their money back into the DeKalb market. So again, to say something doesn't make it true, especially when the facts don't support those things. My hurdle remains that, again, with this project, I don't mind that we've fast-tracked it. I think we need to. I don't mind the design and specs of the building. I think it's a good project. My question now comes back to, who is this mysterious consultant we keep talking about that has recommended this amount of investment? Who is he? Has he been publicly named? Do we know who that is and who we're getting the information from?
You want to answer?
Used him in the past?
Director.
Mike Laubie.
And have we used him in the past for any projects?
We have not to the best of my ability.
And how did we court his involvement in this?
He actually approached us on an unrelated topic, and we talked to him about how to get development going in the community. He's a past alum and has done a lot of TIF deals throughout the Chicagoland suburbs and offered to provide us with, you know, his feedback moving forward. So when we had this opportunity present itself, we reached out to him and asked him to evaluate it.
So it was completely anecdotal? It wasn't anything we paid for or had a previous relationship or future relationship with it?
We did pay him for the services. We asked him to perform an analysis, and we paid for that service.
And did we get a copy of his qualifications or pass to previous deals?
Only that he's done similar work on TIF projects through the Chicagoland area.
And we verified those things?
Jason?
Yes.
And can we get, I mean, my worry is that one consultant came to the table and said that he was the expert, and we didn't court him, and suddenly we're using his word as the doctrine in this one. Again, philosophically, I have some questions on that.
But I think staff has put knee in the frame, Dave, the fact that if the first one-and-a-half million is toward demolition and remediation.
Again, and I would be there.
So you're down to a twenty-five percent incentive?
I could get there on some of those costs. Again, I'm prepared to vote yes tonight. It's philosophically, again, are we, just because a development is, if the same question were on the table and the developer was asking a hundred percent, would we be as excited about it? Maybe, I don't know.
Alderman Baker.
Question for staff. I don't want to assume, but I'd like to hear it reiterated back. All the tying of Mr. Pappas's hands on what he has, is required to do over the life of this project before he sells it, are those same restrictions and requirements guaranteed to be passed on to a new owner? Should the ownership change, even if it has something to do with a minor change in the investment group or a major sale?
Yes, so the conditions that were discussed regarding operation management of the property, security access, all those different things, those are all conditions in the development agreement that forms an integral part of the zoning of the property. So unless those were amended, which would require a public hearing, and because this is an agreement, it would ultimately require the agreement and consent of the city council on the property owner, those would remain effective against successive property owners.
I mean, that's a legitimate concern, Dave, because before we had Dean as our city attorney, there was a city attorney before him that didn't inform us about things that didn't go on and be passed once the sale happened. Mr. Pappas alluded at the last meeting that he wasn't getting a bank to finance this project on its merits, he was actually pulling equity out of other projects. So he's actually taking a huge risk out of his own personal portfolio. This is pretty much what we see big developers that we aren't familiar with by name because they're from out of the community do, whether it be the 3M project or a housing project. Developers will come in and use their cash funds to spur on a project, build a building. They might be working on huge internal rate of returns, which we're just being privy on the potential. I don't think he's going to flip it right away, but if he flips it right away, who cares? The concept of what it's going to do for our community, and I couldn't sit here and sell the project as well as a few of the members from the community did, they didn't miss a beat. They're catching all the major points that made this an obvious no-brainer before it even got to this stage, whether it be Mr. Pappas or somebody else. He's the only one that has come forward in years of that Otto's building being in the limelight with the for-sale sign in a TIF district. He's the only one.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
All right.
Just, there's another member of the, actually, Mr. Pappas's rental manager wishing to speak. We had her form from last week, but we don't have it up at the dais right now.
Mr. Pappas?
No, I'm sorry, Ms. Heidi, I believe is her last name?
Yeah, Ms. Heidi Skora.
Mr. Pappas's rental manager wishes to speak.
State your name, please.
It's Rory Heidi Skora. I'm with Remax Experience, and I work with John Pappas on his residential leasing. And I just wanted to share with you, you know, some exciting news that not everyone knows. Our recent project in Sycamore, the Fargo, we just released to the public for residential renting, and there we have sixteen units. There are twelve one-bedroom and four two-bedroom. And within a matter of just a little over a week, we've rented, signed leases, and collected security deposits on eleven of the twelve one-bedrooms and two of the four bedrooms, and another one just came into my phone tonight and email. So we only have one bedroom and one two-bedroom in just a little over a week. And in touring through, so I want you to know what the public is saying, a lot of the people, I know you talked about downsizing and student enrollment and stuff, but all the leases that we have signed are young professionals. There's no one that's in school. They're all working full-time jobs. We even have two people that are downsizing, that are empty nesters now, and are looking forward to that kind of freedom of picking up and going when they want and, you know, not having any more housing. And there are a lot of, over fifty percent of them are coming from out of the area, so we don't even have local people that are leasing. And addressing the point of, you know, what they enjoy about the community is, they walk in, they love the high-end amenities, what he's offering for the residents in far as a first-floor availability, that's very unique to our area. With this particular unit, offers a library, and it offers a lounge and a kitchenette area that they can entertain and have, you know, larger groups over, and that's only available to the residents. The second floor has some storage, the third floor has a really neat conference private area that can be used for, if you have to do a conference call, or maybe you want to just go into a smaller desk area, you know, that would be private and outside of your unit. And in speaking about reinvesting back in the community, his first project was in Sycamore that has commercial units on the lower and eight residents above. That project's entering its fifth year. John still owns it, and five of the eight tenants that live in there are original tenants. They've never moved on. I've only turned over three of them. And when I do, I usually have a waiting list that I can pull from. If that doesn't work, I put it out to the public, and within a day, I've got it rented. So that person moves out, and the next person moves in. There's no downtime. He duplicated that concept and went to Brookview Terrace to DeKalb. Same thing, very popular, and that's entering its fourth year. Five of its original people are still there. I've only turned over three units there. And then, so he started in Sycamore, went to DeKalb, came back to Sycamore, now his next project's in DeKalb. He's still the sole owner of all these projects. They, the very first unit looks as if it was just built yesterday. When you walk the halls, they're immaculate. People love the quality of the products that are put in there, the management, the ongoing repairs. It's just, it's an A-plus community, and people are looking forward to living in the complex and can't wait for their next project. So kudos to him, and I want you to know that you're investing in a very solid person and who continues to still own these and put money back into the communities in our area. Thank you.
Thank you, Rory. Jen, do you have any others registered? Okay. Alderman Baker.
I wanted to add to Alderman Snow's comments about what we've lost in DeKalb. I worked for United Development when I was in college in 1978 and 1979. They had, they developed Vernon Hills, New Century Town. They had Water Tower Place. And guess where Fox Valley Center was supposed to go? DeKalb on Annie Glidden, where the Knolls is. Back then, the vision of the city fathers or the council, they did not want it, it never made it to the public. So where did they locate their second choice? Naperville, Fox Valley area. So I tell you all, there's no reason that we couldn't end up with exactly the kind of excitement that has developed those areas and have it come to DeKalb. There's absolutely no reason that it can't happen here.
Thank you. Other discussion from council? Alder Woman.
A number of the comments talk about what will happen in the future, and I think it's useful to have at least a perspective on that. But I think we need to take a look at what's happening today. And today, nothing is happening. I shouldn't say nothing, but we don't have, you know, developers lining up to invest in DeKalb. We have a local investor developer who has a clear positive track record. I'm enough of an optimist, and Mr. Pappas, you know, appears to have a solid business record that I can't believe we wouldn't approve this. And so I'm going to give a loud yes.
Thank you. Okay. Other discussion? Alderman Fanouk.
I've had several conversations with some property owners and merchants downtown, and they're very excited about this project. One business in particular said it can do nothing but help their business as they move forward, so they're looking forward to it. Obviously, getting rid of the ISO that's there and getting a productive building on-site, I think, is important to the city. And the belief is, I think, that it will spur some additional projects downtown, and if we're fortunate enough, even in other parts of town, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. I haven't heard from Alderman Faber or Alderman Marquardt. Alderman Faber.
Yeah, I'm for the project. I'm for approving or waiving second reading. As I've spoken to people throughout the past several weeks, other than tonight, I honestly have not heard anybody say that it's a bad project. Everybody says it's a good project. I think it's going to be wonderful. I think it's going to be fantastic. Again, the comments that are that it's moving fast, and even having to explain that, once the risk of developing in an area, once the risk is taken away, sure, it's very attractive for, you know, as Alderman Snow said, if this project goes in, potentially, the building value, values downtown can increase. You can ask a little more money for your building when you sell it. To know that the city's willing to invest in an apartment building or into a building development downtown, you know, now it's known that the city is willing to make this sort of an investment, that risk has been removed. It's easier for the second person to come along and make an investment because they know the city is willing to work with them. So, you know, some of these things do have to be rushed through, they have to be quiet and not made completely public, because that does impact the purchase price of the property. So I am completely for this, and again, like I said in the last meeting, I believe this is going to be a catalyst. I think we are going to see additional developments downtown, and I think it's going to be a very positive change.
Thank you, Tony. Alderman Marquardt.
I look at this as an investment, and if you're looking at it as an investment, it's actually got a payback on it. It depends on the number of years you want to look at it this way or that way, but it does have a payback through increased property values, through sales tax, through... Just making the place look better. It's the most traveled intersection in DeKalb, and it looks blah. So we might as well make it look good and get some payback in return. Comment, and this goes into a whole nother section, but impact fees. You will never convince me that those impact fees are worth anything. You just can't do it. I have not had a kid in DeKalb School District in twenty-two years, and I've been paying property taxes to the DeKalb School District, and they've been impacting me. But I believe in the future of communities being a good school district, so I pay that. I'm not bringing somebody in who's impacting that school, but I'm still paying for it. So it evens out in the long run. Impact fees, I think that's one thing that we need to talk about, getting rid of in the future. But there's my two cents on that one. Anyways, for this project, I think we need to do it. It has a payback, it starts it. We've been using TIF money through the years. I don't agree with all of... I don't agree with all of that they've done. We've got empty lots. We've tried to make it look nice down through there. We don't have any utilities, we don't have this. But this, to me, in my memory, is the first time that we're actually going to rebuild something, to remodel something, to start something in that downtown area other than tear something down.
Thank you, Mike. Alderman Snow, you've heard from other Aldermen. Are you willing to make a motion to amend the development agreement to reflect all property taxes received by all affecting taxing districts credited toward the forgiveness of the development incentive? In addition to the city property tax, TIF district increment, and the city share of sales tax as presently drafted?
Yes, I, I think this project benefits all taxing districts, and therefore, I think it's appropriate that, that the developer get credit for those. So I would make that motion that...
I'll second that.
We consider all revenue...
It's...
...for the payback period.
Thank you. It's been moved by Alderman Snow, seconded by Alderman Baker. Further discussion?
Just exactly...
Alderman Fanoukun.
Just if somebody would clarify then exactly what that entails, that's all. So that we're all very clear on that.
City, it's...
So, as I understand the motion, it would be amending the development agreement, and it, right now, the development agreement reflects that TIF incentive, city property tax, and city share of sales tax. So, sales tax, R and B taxes are credited against the development incentive. This amendment would also credit other property taxes generated to other local taxing districts.
Okay, and then, along with that, the, you know, we had originally talked, you know, twenty-five, thirty-year payback, what did this shorten that time period to then approximately?
In accordance with the analysis done by the Community Development Department, it would be looking at likely a seven-to-nine-year payback.
Thank you.
And this is only the increase of those taxes that are getting credited. So it's not crediting current taxes, but it's giving credit for increased taxes.
As the development agreement is drafted, we actually pulled out the taxes for, well, the most recent taxes we have, which are those paid in 2016, and we said, here's the EAV, here's the actual tax generated. So if this amendment passed, we would update the development agreement to use that as the base essentially.
Okay. Further discussion? Alderman Baker.
I'm very happy to hear that Alderman Marquardt mentioned the impact fees and how they've impacted him. I've possibly put in millions, if not easily over a million dollars in property tax that went back to District 428. I had three children, though, that went through the school system, and they did quite well. But with all that money going in, I am cognizant that the school district came here not too many years ago. Here's some more history. They admit that they could take on, the last, memory serves me right, six hundred more kids, and they wouldn't be impacted. They've already built it out. And I have a hunch that they probably could take on more, as long as they were actually truly DeKalb residents with their parents in the household. So as far as impact fees, I would hope that, before I'm done here and a few more meetings, that maybe the staff will bring back something that will encompass more than just the discussion that we had tonight on impact fees.
Can we focus on the amendment before us?
And I am, well, where I'm going with this is, yes. Where Dave mentioned that if something sells at, say, two million dollars, but it was assessed originally at only a market value of one million, I think we're gonna see in the very near future that our local property taxes align with what is supposed to happen nationally. That, I agree that there's been a problem in the past, that, but they are supposed to change when the market value is, is codified by a sale.
Thank you. Alderman Jacobson.
What is the benefit in, in switching to a total tax? And what benefit do we have in doing that?
Again, as recommended, a number of reasons. I've, I've worked in a lot of other communities where I've done fiscal, financial incentive agreements with various different types of entities, car dealerships, retailers, and each case involves its own type of clawback provision that, that makes sense in that particular case. When you're looking at something like a BEMAS, for example, where the, the largest majority of that project benefits the city in terms of the sales taxes generated by that project, if they go away and they, they become dark, they're, they're vacant, in that instance, it's very hard because of the licensing and requirements of car dealerships to fill that space, there's a pretty good chance that space is gonna remain dark. So having a clawback provision in there that, that talks about repayment of that type of a fee, because not only are you out sales tax dollars, then you're probably also likely out property tax dollars because they'll likely file for a reduction in their assessment based on vacancy. Unlike the corner, that, the cornerstone project is a project that's gonna generate, continue to generate revenues, not only for the city, but for all of the taxing districts, no matter who owns it or what its status is, assuming it's remaining successful. It just makes sense to apply all of the benefit that's received by the community for all of the property taxes that are generated to the other taxing bodies as well. So that is just something that is a little bit more common, and it's consistent with the recommendation we received from Mr. Laubie in his review of the project as well.
Jacobson, did you have a point?
The other thing I'd like to add is to why, why we should consider looking at all the revenues is when you look at it philosophically, that's an agreement between all the various taxing bodies in the city, that they are going to forego revenues in the future in order to remove blight and make investments. And the city takes on that burden of being the responsible party of investing those monies on behalf of those other taxing bodies. And I believe that, you know, moving forward, this is something that we would bring back again with similar projects that aren't specifically built, like a, a car dealership, because you look at the, the return on investment after the taxes, after the TIF districts expire, that return is going to all taxing bodies, and it just aligns more philosophically and equitably to how TIF is supposed to be used.
Thank you.
I would agree, but for the fact that we've already made the school districts and districts whole, and we've given them additional revenues out of TIF to cover building expenditures. We've already given them back their share and then some.
But from the standpoint of, do you see that as, we don't owe it to the other taxing bodies, or this is specifically something between the city and the developer? So the developer, you're essentially, you're almost burdening the developer with encumbering that property for a longer period of time and a heavier payback that, you know, they should be held to that specifically.
Alderman Jacobson, to your point, the surplus agreements credit back half of the TIF increment. So we're still retaining half of what otherwise would be the tax revenue going to the affected taxing districts. So, at the end of the, at the conclusion of the TIF, when they receive a hundred percent of the new increment, then that would be when they're made whole, that's when they receive the full benefit of the bargain. But as Mr. Michnik pointed out, during this intervening period, I mean, we're essentially investing funds that we're diverting from them. That's the purpose of the TIF.
And we made that up through a lump sum make-whole agreement, did we not? Of over two million?
The city has not made all of the taxing districts whole. If we had, there would not be any TIF increment to generate. There wouldn't be any TIF increment to spend. We have paid portions of it that the city, absent those agreements, would not have had to pay, but they have not been made whole.
I'm gonna ask for a roll call on the amendment.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Marquardt?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
No.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you, motion carried. I would then ask for a roll call on the original motion to receive and file as amended.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Marquardt?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion carried. Next, is there a motion to waive second reading and pass ordinance 2017-11? So, been moved by Alderman Fanoukun, seconded by Alderman Baker. Discussion, roll call.
Marquardt?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Pappas, for bringing this investment to DeKalb. We are very pleased to support your interest. I want to also compliment staff for the time spent on bringing this project to this point. There is a posting under Just the Facts on the city website giving factual information about this cornerstone project, which could be of interest to anyone wanting more information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. I appreciate all, all your confidence in me. The financing is ready approved. This building will be built. Thanks for your counsel.
Thank you, Jen. Let's move on. Before us next is Resolution 2017-37 authorizing the negotiation and execution of a professional service agreement with WBK Engineering for professional engineering services. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko. Alderman Noriko, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Marquardt.
Point of order, I, I'm of the impression that we still have not changed the city ordinance, that the official titles of those that sit at this dais are Aldermen. And we have had the discussion, and we have put it to vote, and the, the official elected title of those at this dais are Aldermen. If you'd like to change that, you are welcome to.
Alderman Noriko doesn't object. Director Holden.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As you know, Public Works Engineering Division provides city engineering services for work that's done outside the city as well as with consulting firms. You may know that our, our city engineer has accepted a position elsewhere, and he'll be moving on from the city as of March 16th. Couple of weeks ago, when I found this out, I immediately started talking to other public works directors and consultants who provide these services, and I interviewed five different consulting firms that provide these services. And it's my recommendation that we move forward with an agreement with WBK Engineering LLC. WBK has provided services for the city that have been outstanding, and one of their principals, Greg Chismar, who is with me tonight, has experience as a city engineer with the city of St. Charles. I think that they'll be very valuable in bridging the gap between where we are now and what our long-term solution is. So this is a hundred-and-twenty-day agreement, and the idea is to get us to the next step, which is our long-term strategy. So during this hundred-and-twenty days, we, we will be evaluating our different options, the costs and benefits of those, and then we'll be coming back with a recommendation for a long-term solution. I've asked Mr. Chismar to join us tonight and say a few words about his experience with the city of St. Charles and, and some of the experience of his firm.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Greg Chismar. I'm the Municipal Practice Principal at WBK Engineering. I'm gonna say a few words about the company, a few words about myself, 'cause none of you have met me before, so I think it's appropriate. WBK Engineering, we are a forty-five-person professional firm. We have engineers, scientists, and planners on staff. We have three offices in St. Charles, Aurora, and Battle Creek, Michigan. We consider ourselves a full-service civil engineering firm, working primarily on civil engineering projects or civil engineering-related projects. We function in the primary disciplines in civil engineering. That includes transportation, structures. We've got structural engineers on staff. We have a survey group that does survey work, a water resources group, and in fact, one of the founding principles in our, in our firm is very strong in stormwater management. We have an urban planning group. We have planners on staff. We have a municipal group, and that's the group that I'm primarily responsible for, and our focus is on municipalities. We're really client-focused, and anything a municipality does, we're focused towards. We also have a, a construction group that provides part-time and full-time resident engineering inspection services for any construction project may be involved. Four core, core values of our, of our firm are, is a commitment to service to the communities that we serve, commitment to excellence, commitment to effectiveness, and then finally, commit to our own staff in terms of developing them to their highest potential. A couple of words about me and my experience. I expect to be working directly with Tim, with some of the city staff, possibly with some of you. I think that role's to be determined yet. I've been practicing as a licensed professional engineer in Illinois since 1987. Started out my career as a structural engineer, found myself in a consulting role doing stormwater development, really honing those skills. And then for fifteen years, as Tim mentioned, I was a city engineer at the city of St. Charles, where I did a, a whole variety of projects, actually worked with Dan Olson, who I see he's left, but Dan and I worked together for a short time there in St. Charles. The last ten years, I've been at WBK Engineering with, again, a focus towards the, the public sector and serving communities. I'm active in American Public Works Association, the Fox Valley branch that serves DeKalb. I'm on two committees there, and then finally also licensed in Wisconsin and Michigan. And, and hopefully, that's a brief overview of what I've done. I, I guess in closing, let me say this, is I, I expect to be a resource for the city staff and for you to make the best decisions possible. I heard some of that decision-making tonight. That's, that's my role in this interim, and I'll do my best to do, do my job to the fullest extent.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. And as you can see, Greg is a class professional engineer, and I think we can really value, get value from his experience in helping us bridge the gap to our final solution. Thank you, Mayor.
Discussion, are there questions of Tim? Roll call, please.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Marquardt?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Motion.
Thank you.
Carried. Resolution 2017-38 approving the Transportation Improvement Program for federal fiscal years 2018 through 2022 at the DeKalb Taylor Municipal Airport. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Snow, seconded by Alderman Noriko. Tom.
Mayor, council, I'm here to present the Transportation Improvement Program for 2018 to 2022, which is known as TIPS. In October, we met with the Federal Aviation Administration and the Illinois Division of Aeronautics to go over our five-year plan and discuss with them what we are doing at the airport and how we're abiding by our approved airport layout plan. This TIPS document is a working document. It changes each year, it could change mid-year, depending on what we are doing at the city. Again, our TIPS program goes along with our twenty-year airport layout plan. We've been going on that plan for the last fifteen years by extending runways, extending taxiways, doing infrastructure projects, so we're, we're abiding by our FA-approved plan. All the large projects at the airport are funded ninety percent federal, five percent state, and five percent local, and that's the best deal in town. I've secured $730,000 for our entrance road, parking lot, and teehanger rehabilitation project this year, that'll happen this summer. And I've also secured $700,000 for our navigational aid replacement, that'll be next summer. And these projects will be brought before you, actually, the parking lot project will be brought before you next meeting at March 13th, so I can explain that to you. All these projects, all these airport projects put people to work, and they put money back in the community, and that's, that's a great thing. And again, I just wanna stress, this Transportation Improvement Program is a working document. We've had to pull projects off, we've had to add projects... We've had to pull projects off, we've had to add projects. Again, it's a working document all year long. So what I'd like to do is tell you that I would recommend that City Council would approve our 2018 to 2022 Transportation Improvement Program, and if you have any questions, I will entertain them. I only highlighted the 2017, 2018 projects, but you have the five-year plan in front of you.
Tom, the replacement of perimeter fencing is scheduled for 2021. Is that what would qualify our airport for the 139 certification?
Yes, and what we're doing right now, as we speak, there's a hazardous wildlife assessment being done by the USDA Wildlife Services, and they're half-done. And when they're done with that, they're done with that project, we will get a hazardous wildlife plan. The FAA will look at that, and that plan will recommend the size of the fence we need. So yes, for a commercial, limited commercial airport, yes, that fencing project we do need. The FAA has said they'll work with us as long as we're in the process of building that fence, we could probably, you know, go to limited commercial while we're building fence.
Okay. And the benefit of limited commercial?
The limited commercial would allow us to bring in the NIU football teams and their opponents in the airline-type aircraft, DC-9-30, 737-400. We can only go up to about 140,000 pounds on our runway, so that's what we're limited to.
Okay. Questions of Tom on the tip, Alderman Favor.
What was the, in addition to the navigational aids, you had mentioned hangars, what was the, for 2017?
That would, that, actually, that's going to happen this summer. We have, and you might be familiar with that, the E2 and E1, E2 hangar were the first hangars built next to the fixed base operation. We did Phase 1 of that project last year, where it was on the south side of E1, and in the middle of E1 and E2 hangar, the T-hangers. Now, Phase 2 is just on the north side of the E2 hangar. So what we did is combine the T-hanger rehabilitation, the pavement rehabilitation project, and the entrance road, and the parking lot projects, and we saved about $100,000 doing that.
Excellent, thank you.
Other questions of Tom? Roll call, please.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finukin?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Tom. Resolution 2017-39 authorizing an engineering services agreement with Willett Hoffman and the Associates Incorporated in an estimated amount of $127,313.92, not to exceed $145,000 for design and construction engineering services. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Markort. Tim, Alderman, Director.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. We bring before you this evening requests for engineering services for our street maintenance program for both 2017 and 2018. We have gone through the QBS selection process, the qualifications-based selection process, and identified the firm of Willett Hoffman as the most qualified. We would like to engage in an agreement with them. They have provided a cost estimate for the services as envisioned at this time, but we do see this project as being fluid for the next month or two until we get a lot of questions answered by having them working with us on answering those questions and getting the contract documents out to bid. And so we're asking for a little bit of leeway. They will be performing design engineering services, construction engineering services, and then data collection this year for next year's program. So we're asking for a one-year agreement, and then if they do a satisfactory job, we would come back in 2018 with recommendation and a new amount for our 2018 program. So what we're asking for tonight is just a one-year agreement, and then we expect that they'll perform admirably, and that we would be back next year with an agreement to cover the 2018 engineering. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Tim. Questions of Tim? I've got two individuals wishing to speak as well. Alderman Jacobson.
Prelimarily, I got a call from someone who lived across the street, or down the street on Franklin, and they wanted to ensure we have no plan to pave over our pavers on Second and Third as part of this program. And I assured her that probably wasn't the case, but she wanted...
You can take the probably out.
Okay.
You can assure her that we will not do that.
Wonderful, thank you.
Let me recognize Michael Balling.
Thank you, council. My name's Michael Balling, I live at 219 Lexington Street. I'd like to point out and share that the data collection and the preliminary engineering design that Director brought up is all money that would have been worked done by city staff. The city can and has in the past reimbursed engineering staff with TIF and motor fuel tax funds. So when you look at the savings the city saved back in December by laying off city staff, it's really costing the city money. That's taking money that could be used for roads other places, and you're paying for it in consulting fees. We've done it for many years on many projects, since 2010, when we cut three people from our department. We could have employed two of those people this whole six years in all the jobs that we've done, and we've turned around and just paid for it in the project costs, but it could have been paid for out of the TIF and the motor fuel tax. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor, I was confused as, I thought this item was item number five, which you had already passed, but I think the question that I have more or less relates to both of those. I'm concerned about the fact that we don't have any engineers in the city anymore. That was a concern for me. It came to bear when I realized that Mr. Laskowski, very capable young gentleman, was no longer the director, so to the best of my knowledge, we don't have any engineers, per se, in the city. And I'm concerned about the fact that we're going consultant all of the sudden, and I don't understand how much money, the resolution that you just passed before that, what is the cost that's going to be involved with that? And also, do we have any of the, I know that when John Laskowski was here, he went through quite a bit of data, and I'm sure that Tim will attest to that, too, a lot of research and a lot of data that's been compiled. Is that going to be utilized, or are these folks that we're hiring now going to start from ground zero and not utilize the history of what's already, of the data that's already been collected? I don't know. I, I'm just concerned that we're more or less outsourcing this and the impact that that's really going to have on the data that's been collected already, and if it's going to end up costing us more. And why weren't any of the local engineering firms consulted or thought about?
Thank you, Bessie.
I'm sure they have Baxter and Woodman, some of those folks, they have quite a history of data collected already.
Thank you. Alderman, Alderman, I assume that data that, to his question, is in the city's database and will be productively used?
Yes, it will be, and City Engineer Laskowski will be helping us in that transition, so there will be an opportunity to make sure all that data and information is transferred to this consultant and to WBK in their assisting us moving forward.
And I might note, City Engineer Laskowski is moving on in his career to a director's position in neighboring North Aurora, I believe.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you. Discussion from council, questions? Roll call, please. I'm sorry, was it, roll call.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finukin?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you, motion carried. Resolution 2017-40 approving an agreement with the DeKalb Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 115 from July 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2019. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Favor. Thank you. I'll turn to Director Randall.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and members of the public. The next item for your consideration and approval is the collective bargaining agreement for the DeKalb Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 115, FOP. The agreement duration is for the period of July 1st, 2016, through December 31st, 2019, and this document has been voted and approved by the FOP membership during their union meeting on January 24th. The negoti, I just want to share with you all, the negotiation process began back in June 2016, and it has been a very positive collaboration process between the city and the FOP membership, and the result of that was a very favorable contract agreement between the city, tentative agreement between the city and the labor union. The city labor attorney, Ben Garrett from Clark Barrett Smith, participated in the negotiation process, and he will provide the council some of the highlights of the major elements of the contract.
Thank you, Chris, thank you, council. So as Chris said, we've been in negotiations with the FOP on behalf of, who represents the police officers since June of last year. Negotiations have been very professional, there's been hard bargaining, but very professional bargaining, and I really appreciate all the work done by not only our team, but also the union's team to be able to come to you tonight to present an agreement that we think is very favorable to the city and helps you meet your goals of recruiting qualified candidates and retaining those qualified candidates, but also reaching an agreement that is economically favorable to the city while protecting your managerial interests with respect to the management of the police department. That collective bargaining agreement is retroactive to July 1st of 2016 and features wage increases that average 2.5% per year. That is consistent with settlements that we are seeing throughout the state in represented labor forces. Also, really, really important from our perspective, from the city's perspective, this collective bargaining agreement will put all city employees on the same health insurance plan, paying the same premiums, and that has been a long-term goal of city staff, to get everybody on the same plan, everybody paying a percentage of premium, so it's been a long, hard-fought effort and one that's finally come to fruition. The rest of the terms of the bargaining agreement have been summarized in the council packet, and I'll certainly pause and ask if there are any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finukin?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you, motion carried. Moving next to request for qualifications for engineering and consulting services.
There's one other item before that.
Number nine.
Oh, sorry, I checked it off. Resolution 2017-41 approving non-bargaining unit compensation plan for fiscal year 2017. Is there a motion? Moved by Alderman Noriko, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Favor. I'll turn to Director Randall.
Sorry.
I know it's late, we all want to... So the next item for council consideration and approval is regarding the non-bargaining unit compensation plan for the fiscal year 2017. As you may recall, a pay compensation and classification study was commissioned by the city council back in 2015, and as, based on the recommendations of that study, the city made some adjustments on their compensation policy to ensure that the benefits afforded to the non-bargaining unit employees were correspondent of the market data. And an approval of economic adjustment for fiscal year 2017 of 2.5% will continue to ensure equality and alignment with internal union workforce and external comparable communities. As of note, I also want to remind the council that non-bargaining unit employees, they previously received an economic adjustment each year and a merit increase on their anniversary, which that's no longer the case now, subsequent to the pay comp classification study, the non-bargaining unit employees only received the economic adjustment. In addition, I also want to point it out that the city has also recently implemented a performance management program for all employees, and that will assist on a transitioning to a pay-for-performance system. And when the pay-for-performance program is implemented, non-bargaining unit employees will only receive the performance based on merit. The economic adjustment is anticipated to cost $155,000, which is within the budget constraints for 2017. The appropriate maintenance of the city's pay plan and the establishment of the performance management system is consistent with the DeKalb 2025 Strategic Plan, goal of achieving the highest possible standards of public administration through sound HR practices. The proposed economic adjustment will ensure that the city will continue to be competitive with other municipalities and will continue to recruit and retain talent work. And based on the potential perceived conflict of interest, staff is refraining from making a recommendation, this is a policy decision of the city council, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions of Chris? Roll call, please.
Jacobson?
No.
Finukin?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carried. Moving next to request for qualifications for engineering and consulting services at DeKalb-Taylor Municipal Airport. Is there a motion? So moved. Moved by Alderman Markort, second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Favor. I'll turn to Tom Cleveland.
Mayor and council, every five years, the airport has to go out for a consultant selection through state guidelines. We have to follow those state guidelines. So what we'll have to do is, I'll form a committee of city staff, and then in a month, I believe it's a month, we'll come back to city council for a formal approval, but we will do interviews of airport consultants, and these could be in-state, out-of-state, but we put it out on the state website and our website, so we get a lot of inquiries, but we will form a committee and then come back to city council for formal approval of our recommendation.
Discussion, are questions of Tim, or Tom, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Finukin?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carried. Bring us to communications, Alderman Jacobson.
No report.
Alderman Finukin?
Just that today's the first day for all the spring sports at DeKalb High School to begin tryouts and practices for their spring season. They include sports such as baseball, softball, track, girls' soccer, just want to wish them all a successful spring season.
Thank you. Alderman Markort?
No report.
Alderman Snow?
No report.
Alderman Noriko?
Yesterday, I attended a wonderful concert, jazz concert at the Egyptian. It included DeKalb jazz bands, sycamores, and NIU's jazz ensemble, and I think this is a wonderful example of what the Egyptian It included DeKalb jazz bands, sycamores, and NIU's jazz ensemble. And I think this is a wonderful example of what the Egyptian can be for the community. I understand that Alex and the orchestra leaders have been working for like three years to come up with a date that would work for all groups, and it really was, you know, wonderful sound, very energetic, very professional. It was great.
Thank you. Alderman Baker?
I wanted to once again thank the staff and the Council for the speed limit signs on West Lincoln Highway.
Are they helping?
It's getting better. Where I know they were going over 50, and now the signs went up, and I hardly saw any over 40. Now, they're under 35, and if anybody's one or two over, they don't like that little flashing light, they'll get it down to 29, 30. I mean, this has been going on for decades, and it's finally fixed. And, you know, it's always been said you want to leave on a high note. I wanted to definitely thank the Council for, all of you grasp TIF, and that is something that when I first got elected, it took the IML conference, and I'm looking at Steve Capitan out there, he mentored me and explained to me the if-not-for. It was a hard thing to grasp, but you guys have it down, and if you didn't have it down, then we would be passing up projects. Because, and I really appreciate that when somebody up here votes a yes or a no, they explain their point of view, because back in the early days, when I first got elected, it was like, yes, 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 no, no, and you couldn't figure out when they voted no, if maybe they really meant to say yes. That happened a lot back in the old days, and many projects that should have gotten passed didn't. So I'd like to say, I really appreciate where everybody has taken this job serious and where you're at right now, and I'm very positive for the future at DeKalb.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Favor.
No report.
City manager?
No report, other than I recommend that we not go into executive session tonight, and we can save that for a future meeting.
City attorney?
Very briefly, about four hours ago, the chief was giving us a report on the police department activities over the past year, and we had a lot of other discussion points tonight, but I think it's important that the Council and community not lose sight of some of the sobering points that the chief made. We are looking at ways that we can influence those trends through the activities of the city. We have programs we're working on now that we anticipate bringing to Council in the near future, and the facts, the statistics that were outlined shouldn't be lost sight of as we consider that in the future. Second, there were a number of items tonight that some Council members expressed interest in addressing future regulations on, or perhaps bringing back additional considerations. To the extent that there are, please reach out to staff and let us know. We're happy to work with any of you on any of the additional issues that were discussed. Third, I echo Alderman Baker's comment, we do have some exciting projects in the pipeline, Coroner Stone is certainly among them, and seeing the Council build some momentum and move forward on these projects is a really rewarding experience for your staff, and we hear positive feedback from developers. I mean, you've heard a little bit about staff, but we're hearing about the perceived change in the perspective of the selected body, and it's really great to work with. And then fourth, I think it'll probably be around the first meeting in June that will bring back the resolution to take down the speed limit signs and make a highlight.
Thank you, Dean. City clerk?
No report.
Assistant city manager, Haprendt.
No report, other than, please continue to register to receive the first e-news for the City of DeKalb, which is the electronic newsletter that will be coming out in early March, so you can, there's still time to sign up for your version of the e-news for the City of DeKalb.
Thank you. Chief Lowry?
No report.
Chief, Director Haley.
No report.
Chief Hicks?
No report.
Director Charlton?
No report.
Director Alderman?
No report.
Director Randall?
No report.
Director Thorson?
No report.
Okay. With that, not needing the executive session.
Motion adjourned.
Move to adjourn Alderman Jacobson.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Favor. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Period. Thank you.
For the SARS or for just the meeting in general?